It's Thursday, December the 12th, and it is exactly 6:30 PM. So I'll do the roll call first. Terry Werner.
Here.
Matthew McGovern.
Here.
Laura Sanchez Fowler.
Here.
Mike McClam.
Here.
Sam Houston Clinton.
Here.
And if you would please write for the. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the Texas flag. On my behalf, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual. And please remain standing for the implicate. Dear gracious heavenly father, thank you, Lord. Thank you for the rain that we've had. Thank you for the cooler temperatures. Thank you for this little town of Martindale. Lord God, and I just praise you and thank you for each and every servant here tonight that is willing to to host this government for the town of Martindale. And we just ask for your guidance in everything we do and say, Lord God. We just pray that all words are kept very civil. And Lord God, we just ask for more rain, and we do thank you for the gift of salvation. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, we have two public comments. The first is Mike McClam.
I think we'll have one more.
Hello, both. I'm the longest-serving council member here for four. I was smart enough to vote for this guy getting hired on. But I guess my point is, I said the charm workshop, and it scared me, the amount of growth coming into this area. And we've got to be prepared. And my hope and dreams is a regional discharge plan, so it's just with this zero discharge to protect the beautiful river. So the history of Martindale, if anybody knew about this, my wife's grandfather incorporated Martindale in 1983. And the reason they did that was to keep San Marcos a dump there on a river. And that's why the town was founded. And the city as it is, as we all know, ordinances is the strong point of the city. The county cannot do ordinances. And so it's the state, the cities, and the county. So we're the kind of last defense for the environment, which I'm a big advocate for. It's why I ran. And the little town has, we've been stepped on, sped on, the state's trying to take take rights away from us. And there's a saying, together we stand, divided we fall. And the animosity I have seen lately is really heartbreaking to me. It's like everybody has their little niche, and they want to fight, and they want their their issue done, okay? Like, it shocks, you know? The library's got its issues, you know, I got my issues, people on Northwest River Road got their issues. But here's the problem. If we fight, the town dies. And if the town dies, we're all done for, is what I love about Martindale. Because if this town, for example, as we discussed at the at the water port meeting, then, for example, some people have said, forget about the grant, forget it, just forget it, buddy, go. And in fact, in the past, there's people over in Hobson Butterfly, they want to shut the town down, they don't want to pay the taxes. So be careful what you wish for, because if we do that, you forget about the river, you forget about the previous cover, and discharge is going to be packaged plans, and it's not going to be pristine. And we, as a council and citizens, it's our time. And we need to take care of our beautiful river, and that's why this town was founded. And if we keep fighting among ourselves, we're going to destroy this town. And everybody needs to come on board, all hands on deck, because we've got a very precious place here. And I'm just so tired of the the fighting, the infighting. We all need to focus on the progress. For example, Texas, did a great article downtown Martindale, talked about the business. Not one thing was bitching about the history. Not one thing was bitching about the parks, not one thing was bitching about the river and the history of the town. Now, I reached out to the editor, and I hope to do a follow-up story. There's more to Martindale than downtown. That's great what they're doing here, but there's more to it. This is a beautiful, beautiful, pristine river, ten miles of headwaters. Needs to be protected, and I beg everybody in this room, let's all get on the same page and quit this fighting and do the right thing. I just don't understand it anymore, and that's that's my two cents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Beth.
Downtown three, I was this past Friday. There were 107 folks that didn't do one part, not all, of course, not enough. Sixty-two adults, 45 children, just in the library. They made Christmas crafts and also watched the animated movie, The Great. It was basically both inside a bookstore and out in the street. I did not count all how many was out there, but it was packed. One thing the mater, she made hot chocolate. How many gallons you made? And she's always as part of the library. It read nice publicity for the San Marcos paper for change, and I even got a thank you note from Santa. I guess on Friday, she's Santa, the paper has an article about what's happening in San Marcos over the weekend. And this is just one of the articles. And this was Angela Darian, I think I'll give you the guardian. Okay, this was also the week before, and these are old features, but there's that's another piece published. Okay, finally, this is Winsex. You got our fire department down there, somebody serving drinks, and a few vets, here's a little kid, and here's Santa and these children. And I'll find out if you write the article for them, they will come out. Maybe if I'd the editor was actually here. And this afternoon, the advertising director came out to the library. So I think they finally found us.
I was standing next to her when she took that picture. That was pretty cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing, that impressed me, I don't know themselves. The library received a grant from Save the Children for Arts-based Education. This starts in January and goes through May, and I'll meet twice a month. They'll have music, and Terry Hendricks, our own Terry Hendricks, will be doing the music part. We're also arts and theater and movement. The other guy's going to do the movement part. I don't even know his name, the other guy. Our new peer support specialist, starting this week, who's in the library today, his hours are from 11:00 to 4:00 on Thursday and Friday. His name is George, and he's been trained to help in mental health issues. Anyway, if you need any kind of, if you know someone who needs help, just call the library, it's very confidential. You can make an appointment to see him, and he'll take it someplace, someplace where it's nicely provided at the library. And this is paid for a grant from St. David's Foundation. Okay, I'm contracted to see. Okay, this is a resolution that y'all passed in the last. Council meeting. We'll see how the orange boxes.
Yes.
As a school teacher.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, I should say, I don't know what library you're talking about. This is not the name of the library school. And if you pass a resolution, there's kind of a great name.
What does it say?
This is Martindale Library for the Martindale Community Library, okay? And that's even on the name of the contract, that Jack Grant, the chairman wrote. You can write this, Derek.
I can't recall. I know I played a hand in it. I might have wrote it. I probably got that wrong.
You're gonna F one names.
I can't wait. I can always stand to learn more.
Anyway, I just had to make fun of y'all.
Gave me some trauma there.
Yeah, I knew, of course, and looking at the RS form to the 2022 and 2023. Now, the city had those for two years. Okay, this is my daughter's down script. Okay, she's working on those. If you know anything about the RS, it takes them forever. Once she submits, it's going to take forever for RS to even look at them. Now, our previous financial person was CPA, who got the city out of a horrible financial mess several years ago. And all of her audits, as long audits, as long as she worked for the city, all of her audits were fine. Okay, and she was the one that did the two, or these two, four and nine nineties. She had never done these long forms before, and she said that the instruction book was lying in that form itself. Anyway, our current CPA said that she can fix those real easily, and she said she's telling this option, they don't hear. And she told us that it looked like somebody never filled one of them out, and I would have to do it. And we had our library board meeting today, and we voted on a contract. It's very similar to what y'all passed. And I guess we have to do that in January, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And you have a December calendar of events.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our third comment is Stephanie Carl.
Hello, friends. Me again. I know they rolled two in my face. I don't really have anything prepared, but I was at the water meeting also, as you all know. And I share, I share a lot of of your feelings, Mike. I think that there is, you know, unnecessary animosity. I think we all love this town. I love this town. I'm raising my fans. I'm raising my kids here. And I know that we're kind of new on the block, so we plan on being here for a long time. And so I really, my vision for Martindale is to be prosperous, and it's really, it's a storybook community. And I want to keep it. I want to keep it like that. And so what it seems to me, while I love positive thinking, and I love having a positive mental attitude, and you are a shining star with that, Ms. Mayor. I do think right now it is the time for us to look at the kind of harsh reality of what we could be facing with this grant. I had mentioned before, I'm a grant writer and grant manager. I have worked with federal contracts before. And the timing of this, I have serious, serious concern, and like Jared said, and you and I. We all know that if there's, that there's a possibility this could pay off the city if it doesn't go through, right? And I know that we, we don't want that to happen, right? There are alternatives. That doesn't have to happen. And the project, which I've said this before, there are multiple roadblocks, right? And I'm not sure what you're thinking, the water lines, or the cemetery, or the acquisitions. But there are three really major challenges that if they were litigated, could easily, easily, easily keep it in the courts, not just for the next two years until our deadline of January 2027, but could keep it in the courts. I mean, I'm not personally involved. My name is not in this. I am a resident, and of course, I will, my my front yard will be affected. But I know that there are many things happening that are that are going to be really the big stumbling blocks. And so I think it's time that we take off the rose-colored glasses, and we try to work together to find the best solution for the future of Martindale. And I don't think just like positive thinking, or I mean, I, there are just so many obstacles, and there are. I really would like for you guys to to begin discussions on a possible way out, because we need to look at that. Because the worst-case scenario would be, we just keep doing the same thing, and we just think that it's going to happen, it's going to happen, it's going to happen. And months, months, months tick by, no shovels in the ground, no shovels in the ground, and then we we basically, the clock runs out. So I think while we're here, if anybody wants to talk to me, I'm available for consult, okay? I know about remanagement, and I can tell you that a few of the, like, I don't think that this grant was actually managed properly. And so I don't necessarily think that the city of Martindale would be alive for all of the funds. So with love in my heart, I offer you my knowledge and my experience, and yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go into a presentation by our municipal judge, Andrew Cable.
And. Honorable mayor for council, thank y'all very much. I don't want to contradict you, not much of a presentation, something very informative. What has happened is we have very few, very, very few citations that are actually written to juveniles. But what, in the infinite wisdom of our legislature, they have passed, starting January 1, whether we have a big deal or a big number of juveniles that are getting criminal offenses or not, we have to have what's called a diversion program. It was House Bill 3186, and there is two ways to go about doing this. Every municipal court or JP court in the state has to have one in place by that time. The, the, the county of Hayes has taken upon themselves to hire somebody for that position and utilize them through all the courts in the county. That's, that's not a good idea for a city so small. We're going to use it. The cities are going to use the same person that we hired. The JP officer is going to use, utilize the same person, and they've actually hired a person, gave them office space, and made a title. This is a new creative position that the legislature has put upon these courts. So to follow the rules, what I've prepared is what the municipal training center has created as a fairly generic, and it can grow from there, depending on how many cases we have that get filed. What this means is somebody receives a citation for possession of a property, and that child, instead of putting and docketing that case, we're not allowed to docket it. We're going to have to divert that case. We give them a choice. The parents can sign and say, we want to divert the case to a diversion program. I took the liberty of creating an intermediate judicial diversion program. That's one that the court can handle with the prosecutor without more staff and hiring somebody, but that's that's silly. The idea of this program is to keep juveniles from being docketed into a court case. The reason I think that it would stop regular legislation is because any court worth itself has already been deferring juveniles. I don't think I've ever fined a juvenile anything in 28 years. But in order to make sure that the court is in compliance, I created this. This is the adoption, and then the second page is the plan. And I think I gave you the agreement. In other words, if a juvenile comes in, that would be the agreement I have them sign. I talked to Bud this morning. He's agreed to be the contact person. It's very strange, the language in the bill. I can utilize anybody for the contact person. I can encumber the library to take on this responsibility to supervise the juvenile. I can encumber the Lions Club. It's really poor legislation that was written, but I want to make sure we're in compliance. So this is what I put together. It is the minimum of what they're requiring by the municipal training center. And it goes into January. Again, I don't know what the numbers are. I have no clue how many juveniles that the court deals with. I venture to say not very many. But if it comes up, and if a juvenile comes through, we're going to offer them the deferment program. I'm sorry, the diversion program. If they bite on and want to do that, we're prepared to handle that case. Just want to make sure we're in compliance. Jared, I know that on the agenda you put me down, or y'all put me down on this. I don't know if y'all want me to talk about anything else going on in the court, if I'm allowed to do so.
Um.
I'm into my third month.
I guess.
I think we, I think what we should do is while you're here, it's not really an agenda item, but let's, let's make use of it to a degree. Schedule a time that we can come back with a city council for that post-90-day.
Yeah, that's what I, I apologize. That's, that's exactly, that's a great idea. That way I can tell you what my ideas are and see if.
How does, so our calendar, I think, would have us coming in January 2nd and then January 16th.
When you say apologize, y'all meet twice a month.
Yeah, so. Would either of those dates seem.
The second one.
I don't anticipate that date moving at all. And then maybe that's when we can do the rest of the.
Okay, certainly. Would y'all have any questions about this? It's fairly generic. It covers what's required by law to make sure that there's no liability on the city. Again, I just, I can't fathom a need for personnel to handle, handle this when literally this program is what every good judge has been doing when they got.
Maybe this is a question. So the types of cases that would be diverted under this program would be traffic offenses or any sort of class C misdemeanors?
Criminal, no traffic.
Do we even have jurisdictional criminal matters?
We do.
Okay.
A class C, five offenses only.
Like.
Personnel, public intoxication, biting.
Okay.
Sort of conduct.
Those sort of things.
I just don't see that many 16-year-olds getting cited by the police chief.
Is that the the age maturity for the purpose of this?
For this, this statute is 16 and below. Yet I haven't seen one ticket of a juvenile yet.
So we would resolve it in our courts, you're saying, or you mentioned municipal diversion program? Are we working in coordination with Hayes County or some other county? We don't have any facilities or anything.
I apologize, council member. I jumped out there, was giving you a synopsis. That's what we're doing up in Hayes. They're so big that they hired a person to handle this position so it didn't encumber the courts. We will not be docketing the case. We'll be holding the case in abeyance. It will not be put into the computer. Then I know they have downloads, so what I'm going to ask the staff to do is change the disposition to admin. And then I'm going to give it to Bud in, I'll call him Ken, give it to Bud in. That's why I chose, there's two ways to have a different person running this or do it through the court. I chose intermediate so that way we can facilitate that without staff.
It basically is a probationary-like program.
It's simply a pre-trial diversion, it's all. The person doesn't get injected into court system. They have an opportunity to take care of it outside the court with some sanctions that are put on by the prosecutor. If they're not successful, then they file it like a regular citation.
Could they do like community volunteer program, or I mean, how is it actually resolved then with with their offense or?
It, it has, it has to be developed, and I think I gave you, there's a, there's a slew of different sanctions that they. And when I say the court, it can't be a court, so I have to be at Bud, and I will come up with a way that these people are going to have to. I mean, it's, it's just about anything that we can add that we'd like for them to do.
Yeah, I mean, we could add something to have a volunteer program at the park or a community service.
And I apologize to interrupt you.
No.
The court, the courts are like, we do that. We will be doing it already. If anyone likes to, can't pay the fine, I'll, I'll convert it into community service hours. I'm reluctant with juveniles because there's liability if they're ordered by the court, and they get hurt. I don't know if you want to go down that road. I get asked all the time, send community service workers for trash pickup, and the county says, please don't. Don't put the kids in the roadway. But not say they can't elect to do so. If you have a community hour, kids' service hours, we can talk about that. Creating a list of people who are interested in the community of having youth service workers. Because we have adults that can't pay their fine, and I convert it into youth service hours routine.
You've done that recently?
I'd have to ask the staff, but I, I have an open order. If someone can't afford it, it's a volunteer periodically. If they can't afford, they fill out an identity form, and we can convert all their hours, all their dollars into hours of community service, and they can do it. We let them choose. What happens is, I used to keep a list of all the people wanting it, and it changed so often. They go sign up, and they think, we don't need anybody. So we, we, any nonprofit can utilize the research. For y'all's knowledge as a council, I run a community service group over in Hayes County, and I utilize adult probation, and it's the same probation department. And this, this Latitia is the lady that did with adult probation, and I'll call it again. And I'll have a function, and I'll have 20 people show up to help with the function. So that's something that, that any nonprofit here can utilize probation department for community service for any projects that y'all have. I use them all the time.
Cool.
Latitia that lives here in Martindale, you mean?
I don't know where.
No, that's Latrice. Okay.
No, this is Latitia. She's with adult probation. Adult probation here is a three-county, is Caldwell, Co., Mountain, Hayes, and the director is out of Caldwell County, the main department. And that's Latitia, but I dip into utilizing community service for any city. If the city calls me, I remember that I don't need community service workers or to clean up the Lions Field, and we send community service workers. She does. She sends them when I call. But that's a good asset for y'all here, because it's the same probation department I dip into.
Oh, I see the list here, Team Core.
I'm sorry.
Do, 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 did we have this page up on the screen?
That's, again, that is, that is from the school. I can manipulate that any way we we want to. Again, we do this on, we already do this, and that's why it's frustrating when legislation makes these rules. We already do this with juveniles. We've been doing this. It's always been this way. Someone can't, if it's an alcohol offense or a drug offense, if they want a deferment to where it gets, this is diversion, different. Deferment is, they get charged, it gets docketed, they come before the court. I hold in abeyance the disposition of the case, and they consequently go jump some hoops. Community service, drug test, counseling, and I work with the parents. I ask them what, they know the kid. I don't ask them what, what's their idea of what help the kid. And so this is just another step before the filing is what the state's required us to do now.
So how much of, I mean, I'm sure the total responsibility and partiality, say, goes to, if we're talking about 16-year-year-olds. So you're working with the parents as as well?
The parent has to agree to the diversion program. The parent has to.
And what we're trying to do here is comply with the law.
Okay.
Yes. And again, just for, for y'all's information, 17, 18, 19, 20-year-olds that come in and, and depending on the charge, if it's a, if it's a PI, that's still a juvenile, they're not, they're not a dream. I, I offer the same, same scenario to keep it off the record.
So on January 16th, what do we need to do? I apologize for not communicating better. I've just got the word there.
There's nothing. I mean, this doesn't need approval. It's just the court needs to adopt something. I just want y'all to be aware of it.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the council doesn't need to do anything. I just wanted y'all to know that we're in compliance. This is something new. And I jumped, I went to the school, I went to Kyle's municipal school, but it counts for y'all too.
Yeah.
And they helped us create these, make sure every small court is covered. So y'all don't have to act. I just wanted to make sure you knew what, that y'all are.
What policies were being adopted.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
I have a lot more to tell y'all, but I want to make sure we do it on the.
I think we had one, one question. I think, sure, is it all right?
Truancy, Truancy gets filed, and I believe in this county, they filed with the JP courts, Truancy. And that's another strange thing they did. They took that, they changed it from a criminal offense to a civil offense. Another horrible legislative creation that they did. Now they have a civil judgment against them. It's crazy. What were they thinking? But yes, truancy is, is a.
These are.
A civil.
Criminal.
These are criminal offenses that are going to be deferred, or they're going to be, I keep wanting to use the word deferred, but it's diverted. They're not going to be filed in the court. They're going to be held in advance until we see if they.
And if the juveniles are not going to have a, their record would be sealed.
They won't have a record under this scenario.
I know, but if they don't.
If they don't, and they go through the regular municipal court, yes, it will be, it's called non-disclosure, if it's a juvenile.
So that won't hurt their future chances of.
Right. And not every child, I mean, if they've been here two or three times, they don't get this opportunity. You only get the opportunity once a year to have that. You have to have a diversion program. It's new, the school, they, my gosh, they just laid it on us. We would have, you know. Again, like Kyle, Kyle in this school board, they have hundreds and hundreds. And that's why I negotiated with the county to, to take those cases as well. Again, it's, I mean, you'd have to fire some of the cases coming through. Again, it's, I mean, you'd have to hire some of the cases coming through the numbers.
I don't think we've had that many cases.
No, no. I mean, the, the JP court that I run is about this size and. We might get, excuse me, we might get ten a year that would qualify for this, maybe. So that's why I elected for the intermediate judicial diversion, meaning I actually touched the case. Uh, for a full diversion program, it can't even touch the court. It has to go from the officer. To whoever the prosecutor is and that's silly. That doesn't work when you have a hired contract prosecutors and judges. So that's why I elected the immediate, so I can handle the case legally and still divert it.
Okay, the state passed this law, do they fund it?
No. Uh, you know what? I take, well, no, they didn't fund it. Every ticket that comes through here, but it has, there's a diversion fee. That we charge every person that, that funds something, but it doesn't directly this. But there's all kinds of, y'all wanna ever look and get with Dwayne and look at the breakdown of these tickets, it's incredible, what this money goes to. There's a, a, a technology fee that's supposed to be utilized for the courts. There's a security fee that's supposed to be utilized for the courts. There's a time payment fee that's supposed to be utilized for the courts. The security fee can be shared with the police department. And it's all earmarked and it has to be utilized that way. And then you break it down more. There's a jury fee, a juvenile fee, a diversion fee. It's incredible. And then the fines, I'm getting off on this because this is some stuff I want to talk to y'all about. The fines, if I defer, not divert, leave that alone. If, if Mr. Clinton gets a ticket. And he don't want a record, I give him a deferment. Saying if you don't get another ticket in three months, we're gonna dismiss the case. You've gotta pay your fine. But the good part about that is. That fine amount stays in the city if I deferred it. If I give you a conviction. That's not a court cost, leave that alone. The fine, the state gets fifty-five percent of that too. But if I divert, defer it, it stays with the city. Hold it, pull them out. Hold it, pull them out and fine. That's why I'm big on deferrals, because it keeps the money here. A lot of, a lot of. The chief doesn't care. I've talked to him about it. A lot of the officers don't like that because the case should have dismissed. But, you know, he's that's the kind of guy that follows cases that cares about that. Shows the Smiths, but there's still a penalty and consequence for it. And the money stays here instead of goes to the state. We defer everything, we defer as much as we can.
Cool.
Get this. If you, if you're pleased, uh, yes, on the nineteen, on the nineteen dollars.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. So is, that would be a report then?
I think it would be, um. There'd be a couple action items. I, I think the. The contract that we have with him currently runs for ninety days. That's gonna be coming, coming to an end here soon. Um, and then, and then there's, we probably want, uh. Report discussion on, you know, things that he, he's noticed. And then. If you want to, you could do a, the council, the mayor, you can entertain a performance review. That could be held in an executive session to, to review performance in the ninety days and some of that, those issues might be able to. There have a performance related aspect to it to be discussed in that executive session.
Okay.
Wouldn't we have to discuss to renew his contract at the same time?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And we will.
Well, so I, I thank y'all for letting me speak. I also think I know that y'all entertained, I don't know, some of the. Entertained a collection agency, so thank y'all for doing that.
Have we, have, have we con? You have that contract? Are they working with you yet? Are they, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm getting off.
I haven't seen the contract.
Okay.
But they are waiting on it because they've called me.
I think we're waiting on them.
Go then.
I'll, 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 I'll search for it. Maybe they just sent it to me. I don't know.
Okay. Because it didn't come for me.
Y'all make up some more questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all very much.
So next Tuesday, we're gonna have a little get together for Letty. Letty has, uh, given her, her notice that she'll be leaving us after seven or eight years. And, uh, so we'll just have a little lunch where people can come and go and wish her well.
A beer.
Eleven to one.
And that's, what's that date again?
Next Tuesday.
Court day.
Thank you.
Is that a court day? Oh.
No, it's the show cause, it won't be this.
Oh, okay, okay. Don't wanna run into something else.
No.
Just wanted to let you know that I'm doing that.
To work in. Thank y'all very much.
Thanks for coming in personally. We appreciate it.
Of course, absolutely. Thank y'all. Fresh change.
Thank you.
Um, so I had said something about lift station update, but, um, Pete will probably cover that in his report. Uh, was about probably five thousand dollars in getting that Madison Lift Station up and running. So I just wanted to do that, say something about that. The evacuation center last Friday, I went to Lululemon. And we have a picture. Um, it was cold and windy, but not too bad. And GPS took me way out into the forty somewhere. Where there were these big white Pyrenees dogs. And when I asked the judge about it, Judge Hayden about it later, he. He kinda laughed because it took a lot of people out there apparently. But I got back to the right place. Um, I should have listened to Donna because she told me. It was by the old airport right on one eighty-three. And so I just wanted to let you all know that that took place last Friday and. They're good, they're breaking ground on the evacuations, uh, center that will be able to. Send our people to do in, in during a flood or something. Um, and then the next thing was.
What's, what's an interesting about that is that's on the same grant program. And so they're just now breaking shovels.
They're just now breaking shovels and they had to file for an extension. Just like we did.
That's good.
Is this an completion date or did they mention that?
I didn't ask. Well, I mean, it's gonna be an option. You don't have to. When we evacuate. We just say you need to get to higher ground. We can't force you to go to the evacuate, evacuation center. That could be.
Which, which is one of the reasons when we're initially, it looked like we're getting like the method of distribution. Component, we looked like, hey, can we get one? You know.
Closer.
Closer, uh, to the top of hill in one forty-two or something around there. The pricing didn't work out.
But we thought about it because it would be nice to have something a little bit closer, but. It takes a lot of money. Okay, the next item, I'm sorry, did you? This is Lululemon. Yeah.
Power elevation. If you want to evacuate, you want to have high elevation away from the river.
Well, it's by the airport. The old airport, they say. Okay, our next item is Brown Santa. I don't know if Chief was gonna talk about this. But I really got a kick out of this picture. So this is Officer Kevin.
I didn't know that was Kevin.
And. And, uh, so we participated in this program. We had, uh, applications here at, at the. At the desk in front. And we had three residents or two residents in Martindale. We had a lot more in greater area, greater Martindale, but inside the city limits. There were only two. And I just found that kind of interesting and I just wanted to let you know about that. Because there had been some talk about Blue Santa, which I know Chief is trying to get a program going and everything. For Blue Santa, but I, I just was really pleased that they did this and so that was exciting.
Since we were working with, uh, since everybody was saying, you know, I have a Santa program here, we worked with. We partnered with Brown Santa at the sheriff's office and that was a part of the deal to go out and help them promote their, uh, event. And, and, and location. Uh, so there was two families in, in, from the city of Martindale that put in their applications. And that were accepted through Brown Santa and we're gonna be helping them deliver those presents here in short.
So how do we help with like the, wasn't there a toy barrel or whatever at Dollar General? Was that something we were doing?
Yes, we had a toy barrel at Dollar General and we packaged that up and sent it because we're gonna start delivering those toys to those families here within the next week.
So how can we help with that?
They had so much help that they didn't really, uh, I, I know, I know you wanted to help. I know you'd asked me a couple of times, but they had, they have a, a system with their, with their board. They have a five oh one C three over there with their brown saddle. And they have so many volunteers and so much assistance over there that. They have a method. They've been doing it for so many years and we probably just get in our way, honestly, but, uh. You know, I think in the future, it all came about when I went and asked them at the very end, say, can we do this, that, the other thing? And, uh, they just wanted us to put out that barrel and, and try that way.
Okay.
So.
I still can't get that picture of Brown Santa out of my, out of my head.
Well, getting the dress like that again when we gotta deliver toys.
Okay, that would be awesome.
I think he looks great.
It's adorable. I love it, but I just did not know it was him.
And then the last thing I wanted to mention, uh, Mary Beth. Had me go out and get a picture with Santa. She kinda pushed me out the door. And it was after all the kids had got their pictures taken and so I crawled up there. I asked Santa for a grant to build the all new. He laughed really hard. And there's our police officers that got up there too, so. That was really fun. It was a really fun night. Um. Sold three gallons of hot chocolate.
My gosh.
At two dollars a cup. It was very rich hot chocolate.
Was that the cute little, little truck that was out, there's a little cart that was outside of the bed?
That was somebody else.
This was Joe Nelly's truck.
Oh, oh, no, I mean, there was a little, I don't know, hot chocolate cart.
Yeah.
Oh, there was?
There was, yeah, but I don't know if it was.
That was Dooz. Yeah.
Oh, no.
New Braunfels has Wazza toast. We can have hot chocolate toast maybe.
Still three gallons.
Yeah, we, there were, uh, I don't know about eight vendors inside the building and. Face painting and, uh, it was just really a lot of fun. I went Saturday night to Lockhart, uh, for their parade and.
Traitor, traitor.
Oh, it was raining. It was, there was only the diehards. They still had about twenty people in our. Yeah, we, ours got. Yeah. So we were lucky. We didn't have to battle through the rain, but Lockhart did. That was my report and we'll go on to the assistant city administrator. He's been working on some things.
Good. All yours, Harvey.
Hello, everyone.
And this is his first city council meeting.
It's my first city council meeting. I've been working for the city about two months now. Uh, I only have two stuff on my little portion right now, uh, building permits, software update. So we just had a meeting today with two, uh, companies that do building permits. And I think it went pretty well. Uh, we had Mr. Governor and Ms. Florence, Florence, my bad, or Flower, my bad.
Oh, it's fine. It's fine. Answer to everything.
They came to the meeting and they asked questions and made sure things seemed right for the city. In my opinion, it seemed that it went pretty well.
We'll probably have the recommendation for city council to vote on the contract. Cause it's one of the spending authority. Probably that first, um, meeting in January.
I, I did ask the mayor to reach out to Baritas just to see that they did not have something.
We did about eighteen months ago. Uh, they do not have anything that's public facing. And they were gonna do an upgrade to their system, but again, we're not gonna offer it for external. And Tom said, well, can we do some sort of API interface if we get one that will directly feed into yours? That wasn't available at that time, so. There's, we're, we'll, there'll be two options when we get to that point. They'll, eh, that will either be a manual process or amendment to their. Either it's gonna be a manual process that the city takes, or we take the intake, copy and paste from one system to another. Unless we can create some sort of bot that can do it. Um, which might cost some money. Or what we do is we ask them. Under our contract, the modification of our contract, that they use our system as a system record for all their inspections and things. But I haven't had that conversation with them yet, so we don't know.
So what's the advantage of this? I'm, I mean, I'm sure there's a few, but I mean. He mentioned it partly, but who is actually reviewing the permits and making sure? That it's in done in a timely fa- fashion, the work. Uh, is it done up to the code or what it says on the permit? Who is, who is reviewing these permits?
So with, with the, the. Process forms, we'll have an opportunity to design our workflow with this new system. From scratch because we're removing the paper component. Removing the paper component makes it a lot easier to process exactly what we're talking about.
You mean like?
I, I, I foresee the workflow, any permit application that's received goes through a, a. Um, initial review period. To accurately assess the permit fee that's be associated and that would be done by Bureau Veritas.
They re- they review it.
So they would review, my intent is for that they review everything. Our contract has everything. It's gonna be everything. I want to get the permits out of this office as quickly and as efficiently as possible. And so that we're not, staff isn't burdened with, with that responsibility.
Of shuffling papers, basically.
Shuffling papers and all, and also making, you know. Balls and calls on balls and strikes when it comes to, is the applications that have all the materials that are needed or not. So Bureau Veritas is going to be responsible for those plan reviews and things under, under our contract. Now, there's a cost to that, but that's gonna be felt into the charges that we. Put forward on this. So there's, there's probably gonna be a period. In this transition while we get built out, where we might look at assessing our fee structures, that's something that the prior. Uh, assistant city administrator was Adrian, uh, was looking at. And, um, we had some recommendations we're working through on restructuring our fees to comply with recent statutes. Modernize them, uh, based on what the market is and. There might be areas where we're charging too much. There might be areas where we're not charging enough. And, um, how we. I, I, I don't like using deposit based systems. Um, for these, for some of these charges when it comes to like development agreements, it's a thousand dollar deposit instead of a fee. Um, I, I think there, we can get a little more, we can get better structure in place to where. It just helps us be more efficient in administering that, that paperwork process.
And so to go along with Jared, I think. There's a couple of small towns that I've looked at and all of them have, uh, online permitting. Their own specific company or wherever. And I think from the presentation today, now I'm gonna vouch for this words. Both of them seem to allow the city to. Get permits done faster, get interactions done faster with the community and allow the community to get stuff done. Faster than us being like, hey, we still need to do this. But, um, now it's being flipped to their end where it's like. They fill out everything, the permit needs to get submitted with everything that we ask for it. And by then, once everything is included with that, we approve or we tell them, hey, you still need, this doesn't meet up to code. Or this doesn't seem right and you, and you fix that.
Yeah, and it's, and it's, and it's recorded in real time. Was one of the questions they asked, it's like. Are we recording? Who is making the modification to the requirements for the permit? You know, obviously a user's logged in and it does. Um, and then, um, uh, the biggest part that I was wanting to know is they, Laura talked about from her personal experiences. You know, looking up your own address and getting the square footage of your property and getting the pit number. I mean, I think most of us here know how to do it, but. Ninety-five percent or more of the public has no concept of what, how to find that. And this allowed. That whole process to, to be integrated during the login. So the customers put their address in and it's pulling everything from cat, the CAD already. So the square footage of their lot size, I mean, anything that's on that site in theory. Somehow can be brought into the system and a lot of other things, um, can be calculated. And that starts the whole process at a more, you know, front-facing positive approach and we look more professional. Um, instead of like, think, you've been here, Sam, I know you've been here when someone's coming out doing a permit. It's, they're already frustrated before they walk in the door. It's, they're already frustrated before they walk in the door and it just puts a negative, uh, you know, tone, if you will, on the experience. And so people then tend not to get them because they just get, they just, they're not comfortable with it. It costs us, you know, two, two hundred fifty, two hundred seventy-five dollars a month to do. If it just saves one day of bad attitude, it's worth it. You know, cause you really ruined the whole office for the day over one person just being in a butt head, you know? And they're frustrated more than anything. It's not that they do anything wrong. They're just frustrated. And if this makes them less frustrated, it's.
And I think the opposite is true, having been through this recently. You also get a lot of attitude from the office because they're frustrated.
Yes, yeah.
It's on both sides.
And as much as we can get the work out of the office and leave it to the people who are professionals in this field. The better that we'll be. And I think this is one of the ways that we'll be able to achieve that. Good point.
And who, oh, I just have one other thing to ask though. Who or is there a component of this that shows that if people do start work and they don't get a permit? I mean, I know we might enforce that on the chief or the police side or an ordinance side, but. I mean, is there a part of this software that you can just pull up something that says? That you would put on the location that says you didn't get a permit? I mean, this is all about how to get a permit, but what if you do work and you don't have a permit?
So with that, both, both companies that presented us, presented to us said that we could. Well, one company, so that there's no amount of people that could log into the program. So what our plan is for this particular company is to allow Bureau Veritas to log into it and see what is being done. And then with that being said, we can also let James be access to that permit, to the software and see. Did this person come get a permit?
List of current permits.
Exactly. And so also with that is with these permit softwares. Each resident that wants to get a new permit or is trying to get a permit, they're actually creating accounts. Under that software so that they, if they keep on logging into that same account. And then they see like, okay, so let's say Sam, that you are getting a new permit, right? With this new software, you log in. Get the new permit done. Couple of years later, you may get a new permit. You log back into that software. You can see your previous permit. And it's like, okay, yeah, but this is the same process.
Or if you want an extension.
Exactly. And so with, with all of that, it looks really well, like what Mr. Governor said, where it looks really professional on our end. It saves a smile, it saves someone coming into the office. And I mean, I've been here and there's been times where people walk in here and you're like, I need to get a permit. And it's like, hold on, like I have this coming up and you try to find it, fill this out and I'll give that to you. And on that same note, one of my questions was, I know that the mayor has a, uh. Two ladies that come in and are trying to get a master log of all the permits that have been issued. My main question, yeah, which is basically that, my question for them was if we were to provide this master log, it's an Excel spreadsheet right now. And y'all add that to your software so that later on we could see like, oh, this person got this permit, add that permit to their date. To their account essentially. And, uh, it's basically just putting everything in one area now instead of it being on an Excel spreadsheet and it's like.
Sam, um, one thing that I liked about it is that the actual permit gets delivered to their account. And I think by email and so they can print it out and put it up at their house without having to, you know, come down here and physically get it.
That's one, that's one of the biggest sticking points for us is literally issuing the paper permit.
But each one of the permits then has a QR code in the corner that like Officer Liel or, or. Any official person with the city can scan the QR code. And it tells you exactly what they have a permit to do. This is what was allowed under this permit. And you know, anything else that they may be doing wasn't part of that approval process. He said, I don't know exactly why, but, uh, he said that people that are not employed by, you know, the city. Can't, if they, if they scan the QR code, nothing will pull up for them. It has to be only people that are designated. So, um, that's good for their privacy, but on the other hand, like Officer Liel, he can go by and just scan it and see. What did they get a permit to do?
The officers like doing code enforcement.
Yeah, and see if they've gone beyond the scope based upon a visual inspection. That permit was this.
Yeah, Bureau, Bureau Veritas inspectors.
It was, it was quite, it was, it was, it was, it was well done. And they have other modules to, we could get into as well, but ninety percent of the problems are here.
And Mr. If you want a recording of it, uh, one of the companies sent me the full recording on their presentation. It was long to everyone, so thank you. Any more questions regarding permitting stuff? Okay, so the second off, the second thing that I have to talk about is an auditing firm, RSTs. On November twenty-sixth, Dwayne and I worked on an RRT for auditing services. For the city, uh, Dwayne sort of explained to me that our auditing firm is coming up. That it's been needed that we need to get a new one. Um, so we set them on November twenty-sixth and so far, or we sent ten. We sent it to ten companies. We've only received three of them. One of them has said that they're not going to do it. Two of them have said that. We are gonna, or they are gonna entertain the RFP. Um, the RFP is due by December twenty-fifth and the decision is needed on January second. When you set those dates, uh, it wasn't really me, but Dwayne set those dates, um. That's pretty much all I have on that.
Make it happen.
So does the council vote on them in January second? Is that what you're saying?
Essentially, we, it would be, or I'm pretty sure Dwayne will have to give a little presentation about each one that he thinks or he recommends essentially. Um, so, yeah.
That's a, yeah, that's our first city council meeting of January.
Yeah, we set it up, we set it up to be the first one.
I just happened to look at our handy bookmark here.
The city's doing that.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, again, do you go on the twenty-fifth? Dwayne should have, um. People go on the good and then, uh, decision needed on the second. We're hoping you're going to look at it during that time to figure out which ones are best for the city.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That was great. You did great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, uh, city clerk, park mobile signs.
Hey, um, yeah, that's me. So last meeting, y'all questioned me, what is the update with them? I unfortunately didn't have an answer. Um, y'all recommended a stronger approach to the situation. Like, can we get another account manager? You know, um, I did, I emailed our same account manager. But this time I CC'd their boss.
There you go.
Um, I had an hour in less than ten hours. I had an answer in less than ten hours. Um, I sent the email like five PM. I got an email seven AM the next morning. So it took about two weeks, but we finally have processed an order. About the three new zones, um, that we currently have. Uh, seven, eight, six, oh, three is, this one is the skull. These are parks. Uh, zones and this is the skull road, uh, skull triangle. One, um, we did get the English and Spanish and these are for the zone, uh, one and two. Uh, I mean, zone phase one and Alan Bates. We're getting a whole new set of signs free of cost, so we're getting them replaced.
What about the bigger wine?
Um.
You know, I, 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 do you know who the sign installer is? You just, do I have to change them?
We don't have to change them all. I just, they offered them and I accepted. There is some that are vandalized at the moment. Yeah, so, so there's some that actually do need to be replaced and the other ones can stay up.
Yes, I've been reminded of that.
Do we have, do we have the large ones set up? The one, the, the ones with the cardboard?
Uh, I believe, I believe I, uh, we're getting the same ones we ordered originally. We're getting a, a, a new set. I don't really recall. I don't think I ordered big ones for the seven, eight, six, oh, three because it's just one section of parking. There's not even an entrance.
Alan Bates, no, phase one.
Phase one is the one with the big one. That's the only place that in, um. So, yeah, I really, I did order some for, for the phase one, but. Yeah, these are the new signs. They do look different. They're just going for a new marketing, uh, design. Um, and they hope that we can accept it. Um, but yeah, that's, that's the quick update I just wanted to give.
They give us the, um. What's it called? Vector file? So if we wanted to have, take them to a print shop and have them printed on aluminum.
They, I am pending the, I think I'm pending this one because I have the other two, yes.
So these are all vinyl signs. They aren't metal.
These ones.
The little ones would be metal.
Yeah, they're, they're, yeah, the big ones would be the card, cardboard or plastic, something like that. Right, yeah.
So you have eight of them for skull. Six oh, three is eight?
Right, and eight, and eight, and eight, uh, in English, eight in Spanish, so.
That's more than we'll ever need.
Yeah, right. No, I mean, it's kind of just so we don't, look how long it took us. Yeah, and look at, look at, it took what, two months to get free replacements? Uh, might as well just store them, you know, they're free, so.
All right.
Yeah, that's quick update.
Let, let us, let us know and then, uh, are you, we gonna do that together, Mr. McGovern? T post are us.
Well, yeah, and then, yeah.
Hold them up to the T post.
Well, the, the two T posts that at phase one, as you drive in, those need to be re-secured in, in the ground. Because they're loose and the signs are blowing in, in, in the wind right now and have been for weeks, so. Those need to be re.
Blowing in the wind.
What is, they need to be repositioned. Thank you.
And, uh, Chief Ward said that you were going to put up the stop sign at Quail Line.
I just need the stop sign.
And we, we get the stop, we'll put them up.
My, um, Chief Ward also volunteered my sign.
Me bring it in?
I'll get it for you just to ask.
Just roll it or tell me and I'll come get it.
Okay.
I have the, I have the client.
He's welcome.
Why don't you all do it? I can relax.
Thank you, Deanna.
Did you need a little train?
Okay, guys, let's get back on track. Okay, we're ready for the wastewater report.
Come on up, B.
For November.
First of all, I guess, do you have any questions about the, this station?
Five thousand to fix it?
Yeah.
The pumps were okay, right?
Check that out and, uh, that was a good thing because, uh, you're talking about thinking like thirty-two thousand.
So you lost the starters?
That was it, yeah.
And what about the floats?
They replaced a float.
That's, I mean, that's nothing, yeah.
No, that's, that's minimal.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, uh, that's what I was calling it, it was a, that's a shuttle.
Yeah, I know, yeah, it's just like a float, really, you know?
Yeah, it was a pain, uh, the weekend holidays, you know, and we had, we, you know, some spend our weekends and. They had to maintain the station. Thanks, Pete.
You know, and, uh.
How, how many homes do, does that service?
Uh, all of, all around, all the way to Martin, to, uh, Skyview.
Through Skyview, the, the, the first, I mean, what's in the city limits of Skyview? Is that lift station in the floodway?
Floodway?
Floodway.
Not the Madison.
Madison might be the only one that's dry. In fact, when we looked at redoing our system. We had thought about using Madison as the new main.
It's not near where all those slabs are, where those carports and those slabs are.
It's behind the fire station right here.
Oh, I, I, I was thinking down by the. Okay, sorry, thank you.
It's a higher elevation. I see the water top falls maybe.
If that was floods, we're, your, your house is in trouble.
The only thing you can, you can't get in there if you're less.
Yeah, you can't get to it. That's the problem.
But, uh, we pulled a second pump out and that, that, that one had a piece of PVC, believe it or not. It would jam between the impeller and the.
Really?
What's that happen?
Someone who's doing plumbing work and they, they lost some work.
Or somebody that, uh, was cutting grass and hit the gate down.
Went down the pipe.
Anyway, we had no other issues at the, at the harvest of this station. The crock of this station, Jared, I'm still trying to find a contract for that, for that.
Go down the hole?
Yeah. Locate somebody. I mean, I've got an old, old day, someone that I, that I got.
Reach out to our engineers and see if they can talk to, see, see if they have anybody in their.
I can find somebody that just got, everybody's finishing this town of the year.
Call, uh.
I call.
Sam Marcus or Lockhart, see, I'll, I'm willing to go into interlocal agreement and have one of their people come out and pay them to do it. Pay one of the other cities to do it. They have folks that, that can or they have contracts that they can sub it out to or.
Those are, those are contracts that, that I knew, but. I mean, it, 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 I said, they're busy, and the, the ones that, that we had earlier. I mean, they, they went out through COVID, they had to go away out of state to kind of work. A lot of our building water plants and whatever.
So is this at the Crockett one you're talking about?
This is the Crockett manhole that's getting infiltration from this crust to us?
This is, this is putting the, this is the, wait, what was it? Thirty-something, forty-something thousand dollars. We, we had, we approved to go contract and we need to. Get quotes to contract for it. We're having trouble time, trouble getting quotes.
The good thing that what happened with this deal here, there was a pump there along the fence. We tested that pump and it was good. We gotta spare it a lot. But it needs some, uh, it needs some, uh, maintenance, uh, they need to re, redo that. They can bolt down, they can bolt, you know, if they change the whole stuff, so. But, uh. The good thing was just that the pumps were doing and the, we helped one spare it a lot. We had to, we, we did the, the, the low journey of, uh, the pump, the, the station, that we didn't have to, you know, buy another. The Christmas in our time. But, uh, we just finished this report and, uh. We did kind of break a pump at the, at the, the, the crock of this station. Cause we need to get that motor powered up that pump to calculate the, they, flow, they. We do that here and, and, uh, we, uh, we separated the, we separated the water, wastewater at the, at the ponds. And we got the, the monthly BOD, collecting the monthly BOD samples and check the pH daily. And, uh, recorded the internal readings, calculated the flows. We check the control panels and the controls and we have about three feet of free port. And, uh, we irrigated thirty-three thousand, a hundred gallons. And we got the, we calibrated calibrated the wastewater back too, so that's a yearly requirement on state. And, uh, we talked about a month, we talked about one million, one hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and six gallons. And, uh, we averaged about thirty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-two gallons. And, uh, on the high end, there was a hundred and forty-five thousand, a hundred fifty gallons on the max. A minimum was a fifteen thousand, five hundred, fifteen thousand, six hundred gallons. And, uh, like I said, everything's back in order from Madison to stations. And I'm just gonna get this other, this, I think, going. I look for somebody here. It's gonna.
I don't really care who it is.
I'll find somebody. Yeah, so, uh, what I may, what I'm gonna recommend is that maybe.
I mean, even if they're coming from like Austin, it's gotta have folks who do theirs. I know Sam Marcus, they use Jacobs as their operator, or they say used to.
I know some folks in Sam Marcus, I used to work with them.
Perfect.
I'll find somebody.
Yeah.
And, uh. Well, I'm gonna recommend that, uh, right, right around March, we, uh, change the whole of those, uh, those pumps, see them every year. So that'll save a, that two things can happen there. We change the oil and check the oil condition in there, it's like in your car. If you start getting water inside your seals, it's time to send it to the shopping store. It can be a costly, terrible. I wanna see if I can order that oil and stuff. Several night oils are coming there all over. You gotta take your replies at six o'clock, we gotta take them.
I have some face oil that I usually use at night and that's very light, very lightweight. If you'd like it, I can bring it back. It's from Trader Joe.
You got gallons of it?
I, I can't.
Trying to say she needs gallons or? I'm already enough trouble.
Got a question for you on the, what's the status on that work for the wastewater?
Uh, I think that just, they just opened bids. I'm like, clearly, it's like, it opened bids one day? Was that one?
Didn't get any.
Didn't get any?
So they're gonna have to go out for a rebid.
Yeah.
One more thing, we're, we have to put those trees down around.
Yeah, I'm talking to Booker on Friday afternoon.
Okay.
Um, that was kind of rude, his name is Robert Booker, and he did uh, mow the treatment plant. So he's a new guy that I'm working with to uh, do some stuff at the treatment plant, like mowing and removing the trees. He's bringing uh, Cooper Allen with him, and I guess Cooper has a way to pull it out, roots and all. They're gonna talk to me.
Okay, as long as they don't, they don't, they don't pull them out physically, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll wear the, the liner on them.
Yeah. Well, that would not be good.
So they'll, they'll leave the roots. Well, there's a way, I, I used to do it, an all-time vice to poison those trees, but uh, with uh. Stuff called, uh, you, you gotta be careful how you use that stuff, then you just wipe the, the leaves. And that goes into the root system of the tree, it starts turning yellow and brown, but I, you know, it's all, go back and, kind of, basically, you know.
They seem to be a big problem.
Yeah.
Those trees keep coming back.
It's a, it's a dugs and the balls out, you can see.
Yeah.
Well, let's make sure then that Cooper doesn't pull those trees out by the roots.
Well, I'm gonna hear what they have to say.
He, he said no, that we shouldn't, right, cause it'll tear.
Right, right, and we don't wanna use a lot of, the engineers said don't use a lot of poison either. Because of the balance in the ponds.
That's it, that's if you drop and direct it into the pond, you know, and they say you're gonna pour it where you still.
Right, right, I hear what you're saying, like, if you put it on the leaves.
It can't be on a Monday day, you know, like that.
Yeah.
How many, how many trees we talking about?
About fourteen that count.
They keep growing back.
Some of the water realms, so there's uh, like a whole tree, I think.
Oh. Just like a transplant it.
You got a lot of uh, a lot of wall night up, I've seen a lot.
Oh, a wood.
There you go, P.
Yeah, you can, yeah, Chase.
Oh, I just, just wanna a- a- ask you one other thing about, we're getting that infiltration from the crushed sewer lines on Southeast Road. And you had said you were gonna try and maybe get a bid on getting cameras in those sewer lines or. Claw, or, or capping off the end pipes into that manhole, because now that we're going into the rainy season. And we've had all these problems with the pumps, we want to reduce the infiltration uh, from the rainwater going into those manholes.
No, just about on that, on that project there, we jumped into that public, with uh, the truck in this station, and after that, we went back to where, so I haven't forgotten that.
Okay.
I'd love to go down there.
Cause we may, may be able, we may be able to pay, pay for that with a grant or something, I think we're, we're getting some grants for those kinds of things. The infiltration from the crushed sewer lines on Southeast Road. That is causing the manhole at Crockett to infiltrate with all the rainwater, and then it goes into our pumps. Because of all the rain going in through those crushed sewer lines.
I don't think it's on any of our existing grant programs that we've been awarded, um, to date, but it could be a topic for future grant programs.
There's a, there's a thing you can do, it's called a small list.
Yeah, we've talked about it.
Yeah. There's companies out there that do that, they don't find, wherever the Bruce Smoke or Art Green, Green Smoke.
Okay, thank you.
But I haven't forgotten y'all's uh. Anyone else or?
Thank you, P.
Okay, it's fine. One more supplies. One more question, I had a, you know, in case if, if there's an emergency that I can get a hold of the mayor or Jared, who's that burning?
Couple may go hobby, but I'll let the council.
Is it a ma- making, I guess?
Usually, we've always been there.
I know that, I know that, just in case.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know y'all always been there, so.
Yeah, we're the pro tem.
I'm the pro tem.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just in case, you never know, you may get it in an emergency.
Yeah, I would hope not.
I hope we're done with emergencies.
There you go, I'm not gonna go that route.
Dude, it's really stressful.
I know.
I'm glad we got it back, well, Jared, uh, uh, you still want those uh, search for checks?
Yes, please, desperately. Good.
I'm outta here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, chief, we're ready for the report from the police.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
Stop, please report for November twenty-four, um, we had seventy-seven traffic stops, uh, citations and warnings, fifty-four citations, twenty-three warnings. Our total seventy-seven, some of those were city ordinance violations, brand line at large, um, disregard, no passing, passing certain vehicles. And so, of course, you almost see all those.
Oh, and they're probably down because our car's been in the garage.
Oh, I was gonna talk about that, so our car.
About the car?
Yeah, our car went down, well, no, you're gonna start a war here, and I'll tell you this. It's uh, it's really not uh, down those holiday times too, you know, we're not out there, we're stopping cars. But we're not letting everybody citations during holiday season, just, and this is seriously violated. I think it's not a good thing to do, but if they deserve it, they deserve it. Our uh, patrol activities, we had two animal calls, uh, ten city ordinance contacts for just various things. And these are from the, these are the police departments, city ordinance contacts, not uh, code enforcement, city ordinance contacts. Uh, municipal court bailiff, I'll, I'll talk about that real quick, cause that's important. Um, he's, the new judge started having court, so we have to have a bailiff in court, so it's a requirement. So we spent time, that was a whole day, just being the bailiff for the court, you have to be here, be available just in case something happens. And so, uh, you'll start seeing that on there at least once a month, because he's gonna have his court and we're required to have a bailiff. And uh, we can talk about that, we, the judge hit on it a little bit about some of our security money. We pull the officer that's on duty in for bail time, if we wanna use that security, uh, that his court security money. We can pay additional officer to come in with that money to be the bailiff during that day.
It sounds like a great opportunity to reward hard, people who are working hard in the field with some overtime, using that, using those funds.
There you go.
So that's just, I don't, I don't think it's a whole lot of money in there, so it could go fast, but something we can look at.
Right, and if not, we still got it this way, we're, but how we're doing it, we, we worked out a plan, the judge and I sat down and talked about it. And, and uh, the attorney, we sat down and talked about how we're gonna do this, and that's why you come up with it right now, work, you know. So y'all will see that on my report monthly.
Where is that?
It's uh, where it says activity, we just court bailiff.
Oh, okay, I got it.
Traffic casualty control eleven, we did one crash report, one offensive report, and um. Eleven assist county and EMS, we had one incident report, forty-three calls for service. Uh, nine parks checks, the parks actually gone way down, because we, we don't doc- document them unless we go up in there. We drive by there constantly, but we just don't say parks check ever since.
As fault, it's cool weather.
Right, anyway, for someone in there, we'll, we'll document a parks check, if not, we just drive by, look.
What are your calls for service? Like, give me some examples, that seems like a lot.
No, not really, uh, just all kinds of things, um, uh, disturbances. Uh, where there's no, about no uh, offense or anything associated with it, a call for service could be, um.
Like what I said the other day about the guns going off?
Right, yeah, uh, go, go check on some firearms, go check on this, it's, anything that we dispatch from, uh, from the sheriff's office. Those are calls for service.
I was told it was done soon, soon, okay.
So if, if the town, if the town hadn't forbid folding, that type of service, we would not, we'd get very limited response from the county, correct?
Well, they would enter those calls for service, and those are dispatch calls, so they're gonna get answered somehow.
But the time period would be a lot longer, correct?
I'm, I'm, I'm assuming, and unless, you know, the county, uh, picked up additional officers or whatever, when they see that, hey. If the town would hold, that would be horrible, cause there, you just tossed another, um, whole area. Calls for service for the sheriff's office.
Well, when I worked at the convenience store, I called the sheriff's department one night before there was, and it took them four hours to get there.
Really?
So it's the sheriff's office, not a department?
I'm sorry, the sheriff's office, well, in my field of work in SO is completely different than sheriff's office, so I, I called the department sheriff's office, I'm sorry.
It is an office over there, the sheriff is elected official and he has it on office.
Gotcha.
But they're not a department of the county.
So like those eighteen motorists, public assist contacts, um, those are just things like somebody had a flat tire? Or they locked their keys out?
Flat tire, we went out and, so I list all those, all those motorists, public assist contacts. So, so someone calls me and tells me, hey, I'm going on a vacation, can you check our house? Those under this uh, public assist.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So we can ask you to check on the rest of town?
Will you feed my dogs while you're there? There's beer in the fridge.
Like, no, we, we, we're people that let us know when they're on vacation and so forth, so we can check your house. You drive bys and everything and say, hey, you know, is this sheriff's car there?
Yes, they wouldn't get that service for the category.
I hear you.
I don't know, I, I'm not gonna speak for the county, I don't know, that'd be a good thing.
What's an instant report, did you already tell me that?
No, an instant report is, um, it doesn't rise to the level of uh, a crime. But it's something we need to look at and, and keep an eye on, just in case it rises to the level of a crime, uh. Or we need to collect, there's things that we collect, if we get some, if we find some found properties in this incident report, right? So we have a property, we have to have a, a case number associated with that, so we can either destroy it or, or give it back to the person or whatever.
Okay.
And uh, we, we did have an offense uh, in November, uh, a pretty serious offense, and we're working with um, other agencies. I, I don't wanna talk about too much, but I'll tell y'all, we're working with other agencies to, a lot of other agencies to help, help with that.
Did y'all, speaking of working with other agencies to solve the offense, um, did y'all finally conclude your investigations? Into the fire at uh, Skyview?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know, just curious, thank you.
Um, on the code enforcement report. We, he has uh, eight citizen contacts, he wrote six reports. Uh, y'all will see those reports come the uh, comes, come the uh, planning zoning meeting. We had those people come in.
Oh, right.
Six letters were sent, and I helped send those letters out, and we made sure they went out. Um, two notes for the people to appear on January ninth, January ninth, yes.
That's what the letter said.
I, I, I believe that that's, I believe that that's the city council meeting on that, that first week, in January.
Oh, that's for the houses.
Yes, that's, that's who we're bringing for the planning zoning, okay.
On January nine.
Ready to go, Sam?
Second night.
Yes, at six o'clock, whenever, whenever the planning zoning meeting. And in door hanger notices, notices, notice we drive around, or he drives around, and sees houses that have some violations, and he puts those out, goes for. If he needed to, let people know to fix stuff, we go back around and they, um. Sort of, we don't have a checks and balances on that, but if he goes back around and sees that it's not there, they took care of it, there's no need to even follow up with them. You know, if we came by your house, uh, and said, hey, you're asking me mode, and you put a yellow hanger, and then come back by later and smoke. There's no need to follow up or write a report, or put a notice or anything like that, so that's why we do that. Uh, the vehicle, so on Monday, the uh, before Thanksgiving, our vehicle had a total engine failure.
Oh, no.
The Tahoe, the newest one.
Oh, my gosh.
And so, uh, uh, working with um, Chuck Nash Chevrolet and uh, San Marcos, can't say enough good things about those guys. But they said, hey, it's total engine failure, we lost the camshaft, the crankshaft, we lost the rods, we lost it all.
How does that happen?
I don't know, it was just, and he didn't know, it was like a bucket of nothing. And so we got to condemn.
Covid car.
There was a lot of, uh, he told me all the parts were on back order at the GM. And they have a thing called a buy war, that they cleared out and said, hey, if someone's got this, we need these because it's a police car, so for. Uh, he gave them, they had like three days, people across the country to respond to that. On Tuesday evening, someone responded to that, shipped them all the parts.
Yeah, we talking about part, are they gonna put a log block in this thing?
Just rebuilt it.
Oh, really?
They decided to put a new crank, a new camshaft and crankshaft.
Is it under warranty, or?
It was totally under warranty and we got.
They're not gonna put a new log block in there?
Oh, awesome.
That's BS. I mean, that's not, you're not gonna get the same.
We would have to pay for that, and this was all.
So what's, well, I mean, I, I never, that is, I mean, I'm s- I'm shocked that they didn't have a log block there.
I'm shocked about that too.
Yeah.
So, so, so.
You too?
So is it, is it, so they're just gonna fix, put the rods or whatever?
They put a whole new crankshaft, camshaft, rods, all new gadgets, all new pieces.
Yeah, but if you're not, it's not a new engine, it's a rebuild.
It's a rebuild.
So what is the, what, so what is the warranty?
The same as it was, it's a hundred thousand miles on.
So the, so, once we get that rebuilt engine, we get a hundred thousand from that point?
So whatever's left on your hundred thousand. So how's the other vehicle doing?
Oh, so, let, let me finish real quick, I said, we, we got the vehicle back this afternoon, they rushed it and finished it, and so we have it back.
So, real quick, Tom, I hate to keep, so how many miles do we have on our warranty?
You see, there was.
There was only thirty-four thousand on it.
Twenty-four thousand, six hundred miles on that vehicle right now, so we have another seventy-five thousand.
Oh, twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-four thousand, six hundred.
So do, okay, I mean, so with the rebuild, so if that, we got that.
Well, that's good.
So it's got another seventy-five thousand miles on that.
We hope, rebuilt, man.
You would hope.
I guess you got seventy-five thousand.
I'm grabbing too bad.
And it's free.
That's good, the best.
Charge one thing, they rushed it, got it out.
I hate to ask questions, did they give a reason for the bail, they say?
Code the car.
They go for that.
It was, this was twenty-one.
It's twenty-one.
The people had COVID while they were building it, apparently.
Hey, this drive, well, it's only been driven for a couple hours now, but I asked Kevin just before, before I came in here, I said, how's it driving, he says, driving great.
So, real quick, I hate to keep asking this question, was it built, would they, did they put the engine together, were they gonna go to the machine shop? Engine builder? Good luck, okay, so we got a warranty, I never had good luck.
He said there was nothing else wrong with anything, the pistons didn't move, the uh, none of the stuff, the, uh. The, the, I already told you, the pistons, the uh, the rings on the piston, the rings, none of that stuff. Then wedged into the motor, the engine, they checked all that stuff, and everything is just fine. So they've replaced it.
Who fixed it?
Chuck Nash Chevrolet. And they're, they're, not Chuck Nash Chevrolet, the, the fleet department from Chuck Nash.
I hate to ask you again, but why? Why did they?
I hate it too.
Cause a lot of times on those, on those stock to deals, you get a new one.
I just curious, why, why was it that laying on us? I'm just curious, they give a reason?
They got it fixed as fast as they could.
Cause it's my experience with driving for many years, I never had original engine, they always stop.
I mean, I'm thinking if it falls apart again, I think we'll say.
They get right back and let them do it again and get in here quick.
Now, our other car has.
Our other car has, yes, it has some issues too, I think torque converter's going out on it and the timing chain.
How's it slow blood?
Excuse me?
The second car, how's it slow blood?
I think the timing chain's on the front of it, so you don't have to really get into the motor. Yeah, so it, it needs a timing chain, the other one needs a timing chain, and, and torque converter for the transmission.
How much does that cost?
I don't know, I didn't get it quoted yet.
Yeah, we, we were gonna see how, what, how long it was gonna take to fix this one, because we want, we didn't wanna put ourselves.
With no vehicle?
No vehicle, right.
Hate to ask this other question, how many miles on that Ford?
Hundred fifty thousand.
Is that worth it?
What, to?
Put a torque converter and time, it's gonna cost a couple of grand? On a, on a, how old a vehicle?
So seventeen? That's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of age on a.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, the.
My mom gives me.
Okay, so that brings us to the new.
I'll let it go, I'll let it go.
Okay, that brings us to.
Okay, that brings us to, he's also getting quotes for a brand new vehicle, so January second, you might be voting on buying a new police car.
How much does a police car usually cost?
The one, the quotes he's getting are about sixty thousand.
Do we wanna get a Ford or Chevy? There looks like they're all.
It would be a Tahoe.
Chevy.
Another Chevy, do we wanna go with another Chevy?
Chevys are off.
It's hard to find police cars right now, right?
Police cars, they're, they're, they're really backordered, so I'm trying to cut in line and get somebody. The problem is, is that, you know, there's agencies that are buying sixty and seventy at a time.
Is there any nice second hand ones? Or you know why I asked that question?
No, we had a second handling, we could, probably could've got, but it's, it's gone now, sure.
Yeah, when they, I, I'll leave, I'll leave you alone, I'm gonna ask the question.
No, I'm just trying to get bids and and it's tough to find a vehicle. I looked for a truck, um they have Chevys, they have Fords. Any kind of pickup truck that we can use, that way we can haul barricades and things like that, that's probably, it would probably be more beneficial.
Could you put a siren on your truck?
Backward. I could, but also a bit more than sixty thousand bucks.
What about a little Tacoma or something like that?
You, you gotta get one that's a PPV.
Okay.
So uh just, so the mayor asked me that question too about like getting like a Camry or something like that. You gotta have a vehicle that is.
We could get two.
But the reason is, is that PPVs, if if we are in into something, that just a similar liability of of getting into a crash and it's not built for police work and so and so forth, there's all the issues.
Okay. So that's one of your, your F-150 Silverados.
They all, they make a police package vehicle now. The other thing is, is uh just this, just the upgrade and the suspension. It is another thing like taxis, you know, a, a taxi, they're not just a regular car, they, uh, they'll, now Uber's a whole different issue, but regular taxi cabs. That are driven every single day.
So we ha- so we have to go with a Tahoe? We can't go with a Ford or?
No, I'm trying to get bids on whatever they can give me a bid on, but the people that are giving me bids, what is out there right now is titles. Uh it's hard to find a pickup truck, it's hard to find uh.
So I, I, I'm gonna keep asking questions. I mean, I've heard, I had a buddy of mine engine building on a Tahoe. I mean, or Chevrolet, I mean, are, are they problematic?
Not, not everyone I talked to, and the guy from, the guy from uh Chuck Nash told me he was shocked to see it like this.
Of course he's gonna say that. He's on the Chevrolet. All right, I'll let you.
No, he's got a sales guy, he's the fleet manager guy, he's the fleet service guy.
He's the one who fixes them.
He's the fleet service guy. And so he, he's, they, they do fleet service for, for all of San Marcos, for some of Austin PDs and they do a lot of stuff. And so that's that.
What does a PPV mean?
Please pursuit vehicle.
Oh, duh, but why, so just the suspension is different or the way that the crash protection is different?
Everything, the, the upgraded uh electronics to keep your, all the computers and everything else running, the AC units, all that stuff is upgraded.
Okay.
And they got heavy duty engines.
But what's a grapevine? What's a grape, yeah, what's a grapevine? They get some vine that grapes grow on. Anyway, you would just have to have been there.
I've noticed you had the vehicle out on the highway there, but I have talked to several people that live on nineteen seventy-nine and they are concerned about the speed that people are going, especially around those curves on nineteen seventy-nine. A couple of their dogs have been hit and they thought maybe you could occasionally put the police car somewhere along there because we're still getting a lot of, a lot of speeding and there's a lot of dogs a- along.
Why aren't the dogs being kept in a?
No one's called me and told me their dog got hit, I have a ticket for them on the orange porch, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say they should be on a leash or in their yard.
Yeah, well.
I haven't seen a dog, I haven't seen a dog out there. I've seen a lot of pigs, I've seen a lot of deer.
I see Cash all the time. He's out there, the little black dog that runs around, he's out there right on the curb, but he's the only one I I usually see. There has been, now that I think about it, there has been a um, a white and black, like a white dog with black spots.
It, it, it was a white dog that that.
That got hit.
But I don't know, maybe we could do something about that black dog on Main Street eventually. I mean, it's been wandering around for months and I'd like to see something done about it. And I'm sure people that Matthew walks his dog by there or maybe does.
It does much better now it's on the second floor of, you know, up there.
At the house.
It doesn't come down the steps like it.
Well, he's always out there though, right around the stop sign, cause I walk my dogs down there too and.
I'm really careful about what time I go down.
Oh, good thinking, good thinking.
I'm not walking down there.
Yeah, right by the, right next door to the park. Yeah, well, he lives right there, but he's just not ever contained or anything.
They didn't give him one.
Several times, actually. That's where, they're usually so responsive.
Yeah, like I would, I would, I would hear a little. Okay, yeah.
He's a sweet dog though. He's very, very sweet dog. Very, no, just wild, like puppy wild in a good way, like not in a bad. Chief, I really appreciate it.
Did you call him sheriff?
We didn't.
Chief, I thought you said sheriff.
We gotta keep moving on, we gotta keep moving. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and move to four point three, cause Ramon is here from the Parks Advisory Board. And he has a proposal that he'd like to introduce for the city council.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mary. Of course, I'll, I'll keep it short and to the point tonight. Uh over the past year, approximately two point eight percent of the revenue generated through Park Mobile came from uh the ETJ. And that equates to approximately roughly one thousand and sixty-four dollars. And that is over the course of the past year. Uh we ran those numbers August through August, so it did include, you know, busiest months of the year. Um and what the Parks Advisory Board is recommending is offering a yearly pass to the ETJ residents at the cost of fifty dollars. And to encourage community involvement, we're also proposing a discounted rate of twenty-five dollars for individuals to participate in the annual city cleanup. Or any other type of cleanups that might come, uh you know, in the future.
You mean like a river cleanup?
Mm-hmm.
Which one, what, what are we talking about?
That'd be a perfect example, any of them. Um if, if, to get that community involvement, if they're wanting the pass, if they participate in any of those.
Personally, I think, I mean, I, I, I'm always for a yearly pass, but I think everybody that uses the river should volunteer a day of their time. And do it for free. I always do that, but uh I do, I do understand that locals would need an annual pass. I don't know if. I, I don't know, just based personally, I think, I think just keep it at fifty. That's my personal thing.
I like the idea though. We actually had, Dorothy and I had people when we did the river renovation day that were, had moved in and were in the ETJ. They actually, the two gals came and uh they did clean up with us. You know, Terry was, you know, when we were there.
And you know, um the other thing I was noticing, cause I was walking my dogs, um. I started to say I was walking my son and I'm like, no, I really wasn't. I was walking with my son and our dogs. And we walked down to phase two, the, the one that's gonna be the new park. And we were taking a look around there and the whole side of the road, um, well, it's, it's technically, I guess, it's in the. What do you call it? For the county, where the county can put stuff. Well, no, um, right in.
Oh, in the right of way?
Yes, the right of way. So it's in the right of way for the county, but it's full trash. And I thought about you and Dorothy and how I see you go around cleaning up trash a lot. Um but I think the idea of um, of um. I guess uh encouraging people to become involved until it becomes part of the culture um is a really good idea. Cause right now it really isn't so much part of the culture, but I think people don't need a lot of um, of pushing to get there. They'll do it. And so if you just say, hey, you know what, you wanna help clean up around that river, around the parks, especially as we're adding more park space? Then come out, do that, and that directly relates to the pass, you know? I think that's a very good idea and, and the more that people see other people doing it, the more they, they will start doing it too and it becomes a culture.
Exactly, and I, I, yeah, you're gonna have people that come out just so they can get the twenty-five dollars off. You're gonna have people that can't afford the fifty dollars even, maybe they're on, you know, a, a budget. Um but they come out and like you said, they start meeting other people, they start getting involved in other areas of the town or they, you know, start hearing you talk about how, how much it's needed to clean up the river and, you know, just.
Well, I hate to say this, I've been doing river cleans for, for like fifty years.
Right.
And the problem, we have a big annual uh one in March, it's, it's a big one, you know? And the problem is, a lot of people come up and do the section, they don't hardly pick any trash up and they get, they get their free barbecue, you know? I mean, a lot of people do, a lot of people do work hard and.
People fuck.
I didn't say that. I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
I'm kidding.
Uh, I, I think, I think fifty a year is very reasonable, in my personal opinion. I don't know, I, I'm, I'm flexible, I'm not gonna make a big point about the twenty-five dollar discount, but we could do it later, but I'll have the rest of the council.
Oh, it's just discussion or is it an action item?
Discussion.
Hey, uh Ms. Harper had a question, I'm sorry.
Nice question, that'll leave the ETJ, but anyway, most of the time they'll talk about disabled veterans. Um. Is, y'all have like a free pass for disabled veterans?
Oh, good one, very good question.
That'd be a good one. Uh we haven't thought of that or brought it up.
That's no problem.
That is a good one. Except the problem with that that I see is that they can't act, if they're a disabled veteran, they can't access the river.
It's not ADA compliant.
It's not.
ADA compliant.
Yeah, not every disabled veteran can use their.
That's true, that's true, good point.
There's one um, there's one pastor that comes and he usually parks at school and he, he'll bring two to four veterans with him.
Yeah, that's, that's no problem. They did their service, sure.
But they, they get free parking, that's my question.
We haven't talked about it today, they don't, but that's something we can bring up for sure.
And also, uh is there a resolution or just something? Or like special events at Bates Park where we have like free parking? I wanna see that in hiding. Because, you know, y'all may not be here, I may not be here to remember, but you get free parking on that particular day, that's for.
Well, I think that's a special events permit and then, well, it's, it's on a case by case. Yeah, it's a case per case uh thing as you do a special event. That's a good idea. Make sure it's in your contract when you set up with the city to do that. The kite day, put it in, have them write it in for kite day. Oh, okay.
But I have to do it every year, it should be on.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
The contract that we, we have with the ci- you have with the city when we do it, we could put that in there that you get a free day. You know what I mean? And then that, it doesn't matter who's on the council.
I would wish, you know, if they need to have one free day, not just one for them.
Well, that, and then, then it refers to a case by case situation.
It's a case by case situation. Yours is the only one last year that got free parking.
And for certain hours and so.
Right.
Per- personally, it, it's a deal. I mean, to have access to the river for fifty dollars a year is a deal because it's gonna be, as I said earlier in the charm workshop, they're coming. They're coming and they're gonna come and it's gonna be more and more people using this valuable asset. As I said earlier, that's why we all need to be all hands on deck and this is what the town's all about is the river. And, and they're all gonna come, it's not gonna be duets, it's not gonna be anything, most of it is coming for the river. Now, they're gonna come, but it's to the river, it's always been about the river, so, but.
And the word people that come to the ETJ at fifty dollars a pass, twenty-two passes, we will have made more money than we made last year.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I totally agree. I, I'm, when I, when I, when I, we propose is, I, the people, the people that are locals should get a discount. I totally, totally agree. You know, if you're, if you're a local or in this area, uh they should have a pass, like, like the state parks do.
Yeah.
So more than fair.
Did you do a rough estimate of how many households are in our ETJ?
I did not, no.
I've been curious to, to know that. I don't know if, if, if you could figure that out.
We tried to figure that out very hard during the last parks meeting and um the problem with figuring it out um off of most of the publicly available data. Is that you can't break it down by the boundaries of our um ETJ, but I know Hobbie has been doing research.
Solution for this?
Ho- yeah, Hobbie's been doing a lot of research that he can break it down any way you want it.
I don't know the exact number, but I could for sure give you an exact number if y'all. It was a, it was a rough estimate, basically on those, that spreadsheet you did.
Just make it up, we won't know.
I'll need to look, I'll need, I'll need to look at my spreadsheet, haven't looked at it in a while, but. It's, it's, it's a good chunk, I would say, compared to our city limits, it's way higher than. I have a four hundred, there's four hundred uh homes or utility customers in the city. You're gonna say it's more than four hundred? More than, so how, how do we determine there are, there are ETJ? How do we determine?
So with that.
Well, that's, that's one of the points I was gonna make is, they could be the ETJ today and they, they're not in the ETJ tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Um, and, and the other question I have is. How many um customers in the ETJ have spent more than fifty dollars?
Yeah.
And, and I feel like we're giving a benefit to maybe one or two, three people. And not providing a benefit for much more than anybody, than anybody else, cause anybody else, they might not go there five times in the summer. But there could be super users and we're just providing a benefit to a super user, one or two or three. I don't think that's a position that the, it's not a position I would promote, is to choose onesies and twosie winners. Um from amongst that group unless you're gonna do that annual type pass program for everybody.
Hmm, easier.
And then at that point, what's the point?
I don't understand what, I don't understand what you're saying to do.
When we create, the more exceptions you apply to a rule, the harder it is to administer.
Exactly, as well as my.
And what rule are you referring to?
The park.
Paying for parking. Paying to park. So you're saying, so you're in favor of?
I don't know the data. I'm just, I'm saying the, the risk.
Regardless of the data. So without the data, just your opinion is to not do any kind of um parking pass deal for ETJ?
Wouldn't be my recommendation.
Yeah, so um, okay, that's fine. Well, I don't know when we're gonna vote on this, but um.
Well, cause if we have a hard time telling when or how, where someone's in the ETJ, then when they come to get, when they go to get a passing pass. What if they say they're in the ETJ, but they're really not?
They have the right utility deck for something.
Yeah, they would have to. Say, what if we look at the map and we go, well, they are not in the ETJ?
Be the right way, utility.
Then they wouldn't get the pass. The same way, if you said that you're in the city and you're not, then you don't get a free pass.
You know, we just said it's difficult sometimes to determine and they can, they can be in the ETJ and then they can move out of the ETJ. How many people do you think that's gonna be?
The CCN of the water department. Okay, I mean, that's another.
There you go, there you go.
Yeah, because that, if you look at, if you look at that one on the census, it's an actual area you can isolate. So, and then that has like seven thousand people.
But we haven't had any developed lands with homes on it in our ETJ that have pulled out of the ETJ. The ETJs that have only pulled out are thousands of prospective homes that were to be built in our ETJ.
That's not true. Somebody pulled out just the other day.
Who, you mean like a house?
Uh, a developer pulled out.
But I know what I'm saying, but they haven't built the houses yet.
Any property owner, any property owner. Spencer's Canoes could pull out the ETJ tomorrow.
Uh Mike Merritt, what you said is the, the water bill, that could be, that could be used determining factor. If you're on Martinville Water Supply, you would probably most likely be in the ETJ. That would be a local.
Well, that's a CCN of the water department.
Yeah, that's, that, that helps define the boundary. That would help define the boundary. That would be a good guideline.
I mean, it's just an idea, but.
Because I'm tell, I'm telling you where the growth is, I mean, Sam Marcus is fixing to start charging for parking. And when they do that, it's, they're all gonna be.
Been hearing that for a while. It was in the paper.
They're gonna start, I think, they're gonna start, they're gonna start next year. So the, Sam Marcus has a real problem right now with, with, with overuse and their, their, the parking's a real problem. They're all gonna be coming here, which is no problem, but uh, you know, we need to be.
Well, all those people will pay for parking.
So that's why, that way we wanna be fair for annual pass, maybe like I say, the water bills or something like that and even. Because like you said, we, how do we enforce, everybody's, oh, I'm in the ETJ or whatever, but uh, again, I'm, I'm definitely, I mean, that's.
Thanks for your time.
That's good, thank you. Thanks for the input, appreciate it.
It's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thanks for uh getting involved.
Oh, of course.
You could combine it into one thing, like you, where you are wanting to do this and do that. Like your pa- your ETJ pass. Like your pa- your ETJ pass and also a veteran.
Yeah, now, we're, we're probably a little bit early cuz we still haven't established our skulls, uh, parking lines, so. We don't really have the data on that, cuz what, what a lot of, they call super users, were probably paddlers. They, they, they pull out, they, that's a very popular place to pull out.
Skull is not a park yet, though, it's.
No, he's talking about the parking pass.
Parking, pay parking, Mr. Flynn, not a park, paid.
Parking.
Well, that's more gonna go to a separate fund, anyway.
So that's, that's gonna be, that's what we had to sign for, so, that will be an, an issue there, so, all right.
Okay, so we're gonna go to four point one, um, we've had. Uh, Ross King brought us some people who were thinking about buying his property. And they thought they would be ready tonight to actually do a, um. What is the name of the permit they were gonna do, uh, special use permit, and, but they didn't have all. Specific use permit.
And where is this located?
It's, uh, the old Bar- Burger Barn, and so, um, what they.
The highway eighty feet.
Jane, Jane Lathan's place.
No, it's Ross.
Uh, get with me, I'm, I'm.
Her brother. And so they came and visit, have come and visited with us a couple of times, but all of their paperwork wasn't in. So we told them they could come tonight to talk to city council to see how, what, what city council would think about. Before they put their thousand dollars down.
If, if I'm, if I may, Mayor, uh, as a zoning administrator, it, based on some of the preliminary information that's been submitted. I intend for it to be my recommendation to not grant the special use permit. Because of the dangerous traffic patterns that could be created near that intersection. And the, the design, and where the road is, and where they would have ingress, egress from their, uh, gas station and things, so. Um.
Isn't there a historic, isn't that like a historic building, and like, I mean, they're, they're talking about tearing all that down?
There's, there, there, there's several zoning issues that get layered in on this. The first one is under our permitted use, our use table, uh. It is a specific use permit application, it's not something that's allowed by right within the commercial area for a fueling station, which is would qualify. And that, so every gas station that comes in gets subject to that same kind of, uh. Consideration by, by planning and zoning board. The, on top of that, you also have, um, a certificate of appropriateness for the scenic corridor. That, that goes towards when they're doing the building permit and things, and so, um. Purvis cover's another issue, and so there's, there's a, there's several layers that they're gonna have to satisfy to go through, and I think on the. The threshold issue of like, is it allowed within our zoning? It's a specific use requirement, and I would tend to believe it's kind of a bad area. Not saying there's not a need on highway eighty for, uh, truck fueling stations, I just think that that would be. A really difficult spot to accommodate, given the traffic patterns in that specific location.
It's across the street from the gas station.
Yeah, across the, uh, the triangle from the gas station.
Yeah.
Yes.
I am very happy that this came up, uh, because I would like to, um, suggest. That perhaps it's time for us to, uh, reexamine some of our zoning stuff. Um, for example, let's say he came tonight. And he said, oh, I wanna put a truck stop there, and I think several, at least members of the, um. Of the council would say they are not interested in a big old truck stop at that particular location. Um, for whatever reasons, right, like, you may just think that it doesn't belong there on the way into the historic. Area, or you might think that like it's not safe, or it's whatever. It's too close to the river, I don't know, you can have whatever reason you want, but it would be really nice if we were able. Um, to speak to, what do we want? What kinds of businesses, what do we want it to look like as we develop that eighty corridor?
That's kind of what we have in the use table, and that's why they were asking for a specific use permit, because.
Right.
It was something that the city council had already decided that they didn't want there.
Right, and, and, um, when I was recently at a Lockhart City Council meeting. And it just happened that they were going through discussing, um. Their own scenic overlay areas and, uh, trying to decide exactly like where they were putting them. But then, more than that, what I was very interested in is their planning guy. I, I'm gonna email him and see if I can get a copy of the list he was working from, cuz he had a set of slides. That, um, he was showing to the council and saying, for example, would we like it to look like this? Would we like tall buildings or all short buildings, would we like?
Signs be.
Yeah, do we want, um, signs that are particular, you can even go down to like the colors, like he was saying B caves. All of your signs and B caves have to be green and white, or white with green or something, and so even McDonald's there. It's the only McDonald's in America that doesn't have a yellow and red sign, because it's in B caves in a camp. So, then that led to some really interesting conversations among the various council members, where people were saying, is this. Is this going to encourage, um, business owners? Is this going to bring in the kinds of businesses that we want? Is this particular idea gonna be fair to business people? How do we bring in the people we want and not the people we don't want, so that our town can look the way we want it to look? Does it matter if this part of town, like on eighty for us, looks the same as downtown? Or can, do we want it to have a whole different look cuz it's on a highway? And I think some of those more particular conversations, when they're guided by, here's a list of criteria. Look at them and figure out, are these important or not important? Cuz I know, I know the table, and the table is wonderful, it is wonderful, it's not the same. It, it was not a, all this, it's much more, um, an aesthetic look than a functional look.
Well, and I agree because, um, like the scenic corridor, that's what I was talking to you about, that we really need to define. The same thing that you're talking about, because if we're gonna have a scenic corridor, what's the criteria?
That's what I told you, like it, when we heard, when we heard it and, and Lockhart, I told Terry, this is what the mayor was talking about, I have to get a hold of this.
His name's David, I remember his name's David, now what does he call?
You know, you know, a perfect story, and I know you, you were here, when we had the truck, the first truck stop. And they, we had to, the thing is, we had to change from mixed use to, uh, commercial. We, they were, to, to do a zone change.
Mm-hmm.
So, and here we get back to the town surviving and having a city. That's what's so critical, you have zoning like that.
Mm-hmm.
And what happened in that situation, it, it, it came around, it was three hundred feet from the San Marcos River. The, the, the owner of the property actually came in, it was rejected, and the cool part of it, the woman came in, I'll never forget. The woman came in, she said, well, we can't do this, how about a little strip thinner? And, uh, what about making it look like, uh, downtown, uh?
Yeah, I remember that.
And, and what was, what's, and I said, well, what's cool about that is, we could have like a Santa Fe look, you know, all these, you know. Red bread, metal roof buildings, and that would be really cool, and if you go to Santa Fe, it's like, everything has to be look, look like an adobe. But again, back to my speech earlier, if we don't have a city, forget all of that. And I, I made that remark in the water board meeting, that some people had said. Well, well, we don't want this, we don't want the grant, let's let the, let the town die. That's what the ramifications are by not having a city of Markdale exist because of the zoning, and, and that's what's so critical. So, that's a good thing.
Through the supplemental use table, and we spent weeks and weeks working on that, maybe two years ago, and we, we didn't even finish it, though.
No, we didn't, and part of the reason why we didn't finish it is because we applied for the hazard mitigation, um. Another hazard mitigation resilient community use program, we're doing a full new comprehensive plan, a part of that comprehensive plan is a brand new land use plan. That land use plan is, provides the legal authority for us to go ahead and do zoning. And so my hope is that when we get to that stage in this, probably, it's probably just a couple of months.
Was going to ask, how is that gonna look, and when is that actually gonna happen? We, because we're speeding right through that grant, and they have asked for strangely little feedback from council.
My understanding is that they're going to start a series of workshops coming in January, February. I, I talked to Dennis, but I, I don't think it was in the email. Um, I thought we'd have a lot more workshops and tabletop exercises.
That's what Adrian said.
One of the thing we were gonna do is, we're gonna have one of those scheduled, and then the charm folks came and said, hey, do you wanna do another charm thing? We said, sure, and so that kind of, I think.
Yeah, but they canceled their meeting, and then they kind of.
Yeah, and they wanted to do it after the charm workshop.
They canceled the meeting, and then they said, oh, we'll do it with the charm workshop, and then they were like, no, we're just gonna participate in the charm workshop. I don't know, it's been a little sketchy, it would be nice to have some like solid involvement, and, and I kind of feel like. And this is just my opinion and not anyone else's at all, probably anywhere in the world. But my perception of it has been that they have this. They have this template, cuz they said they work with lots of cities doing this, so they have a template, and they stick us in it. Rather than they make a plan around us.
Part of that is because comprehensive plans do have a very consistent.
I know what a comprehensive plan is, that's not what I'm talking about, that's not what I'm talking about.
I haven't seen any artifacts yet, or drafts of the plan, or of sections of the.
And why not?
Was this like a five hundred thousand dollar grant?
Yeah, three hundred, or three fifty?
Yeah, three, three hundred.
So, um.
Cuz don't we only have like a year and a half left? Out of three years.
You ask for a report in, in January.
We probably need an update, like a, like an actual update, not just like a quick, oh, hey, we did a survey, fifty people responded. Like, but actually, like, where are you in that, we're halfway through? Like, where are we, where are we going, what's next, what do you have finished that we can look at?
That's a good way to ask the question.
What do you have finished that we can look at?
Yeah.
That we can see progress.
Cuz that's the.
Cuz, cuz exactly what you're talking about is some of the frustrations I've had as a zoning administrator, where we have mixed use thrown around all over the place. And it's, and even some prior council members refer to it as multi-use. Well, no, it's mixed use, a mixed use development is typically two or three story tall buildings with shops below, apartments on top. And it's a very walkable, um, area with, you know, parking is elsewhere, and it's.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
So like, duets, that's a mixed use building.
Yes, that's for her.
That, that, that is.
That is our mixed use.
That is.
That is, that is it, that's our example.
That, that is the example, the only example that we really have, yet for some reason we have mixed use. Where the propane tank company is, or something like that, like, uh, really odd stuff.
Um, but like, you know, we're on.
And also we allow for residential buildings in floodway areas, and we could very easily, over the course of ten years, have. A ton of houses on stilts, and you lose that nice skyline view, and really inter, really interferes with the enjoyment of the nature. Down near phase one and things, so.
I think the most important thing that I got from the charm thing is when you were pointing out on the map. After they had added all the things in, and you pointed out and you like circled the one area that's off of eighty. And, uh, but like maybe this side of eighty somewhere.
It's the corner of nineteen seventy-nine and eighty, which is one of the few areas that has a lot of potential that in, not encumbered with. Flood, um, risks, and the other being next to the skyline, or sky view, um, development.
Right.
Those, those are really.
And you were.
One of the two areas that.
Yeah, you were like, here, the, it looks like these are the places we need to capitalize on, and there's enough room for a developer. To have like stores on eighty, and then houses and things, whatever kind of residences within that, you know, like back off of eighty. And I was like, yeah, like that's what we need, is that kind of input as a council, so that we can then plan.
That much.
Right.
Cuz that's where the, that's where the comprehensive plan should pick up that conversation.
We hope.
Okay, so getting back on track.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Should we, uh, should Hobbie inform? The people who are wanting to bring this to council, what, what would you have them say? That is for zoning or?
I don't think, and because that would, I mean, other, I mean, if, if Jared wants best one with recommendation, but anything other than that would be. But some, some action.
And we don't, we don't have an application to take action on at this point.
I mean, it's, it's a discussion, I'm, so I think it's, it, it, at the very least. Your, your opinion can be shared.
About the zoning.
Hey, real quick, did they give any kind of a sketch, or what, what they were planning to do at all?
I know, that was one of the reasons why we rejected their applications.
There's no sketch at all.
So this.
This is, we, we get, we, this isn't unique, uh, the staff unfortunately fields a lot of these type of inquiries of. People don't want to spend money to hear no.
Exactly.
They want you to tell you yes, and then make you, um, stick to that yes, no matter what they do after you give them that yes. And so we never give yeses, and we, but we can't exactly say no's until they spend the money to develop a package for review. And they say, well, I just wanna know whether it's feasible or not, and I give them an opinion, they don't like the opinion, and so they think that they can just come to council and get a different opinion. Without having to do an application to try to get you to say yes, without doing an application to say yes to, and then we'll hold you to that yes later when they. Modify however they see fit, so that kind of. Gamesmanship of the process is something I wanna really try to put a stop to. Once we have these online permit procedures and say, if you want to talk development, you have to submit an application, and you're gonna have to pay us money. To do the review, to have the conversation, and because I don't like dealing with people who are. Either they're well moneyed enough where they can buy land at, you know, nine figures, or whatever it is, eight figures. Or they're so cheap, they probably shouldn't be talking about doing a project that size if they don't have the capital to even go through the. Process of having some concrete, you know, design for us to consider a yes or a no to. And then, for them, I don't wanna incur the expense of, you know, five to ten thousand dollars of engaging an engineer, architect, whatever it is, to do some preliminary work. If I'm just gonna be told no anyways, oh, I can't tell you yes without it.
Exactly.
So. That, you don't like the price of business, you're probably in the wrong business.
Again.
I don't have a lot of sympathy.
No, always in a hurry.
Again, if we didn't have a city here.
Yep, it would be there.
It would be there.
But this is, that's the point.
Well, we would have, you'd have nine hundred manufactured homes crammed in.
You got it.
I was gonna use a military term, that would be inappropriate, really close together. And then, um, without a lot of space to, that would provide for a vibrant community.
Yep.
And then, um. Whatever would happen along the river would happen along the river, you'd have no control over that.
Exactly.
And then you'd have gas stations and RV parks, that's all Martin Dale would be, is gas stations, RV. And tubers, and tubers.
We gotta put, we gotta have a Don's Fish Camp.
Oh, 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 and when we start doing.
We'll call it Mavericks.
Mavericks.
Um, Bud. Um, I did.
One at a time, please.
I raised a question, um, I, last week sometime, um. And I remember that the mayor was saying she doesn't actually know, so maybe, um. As we, not tonight, but as we like move into discussing, um, our comprehensive plan, um. I'm still not sure if I should put air quotes, um, maybe, um, could you find out for us? Would we be allowed to make a city ordinance that said? That there, that there can be no tubing companies inside the city limits?
I don't think we can prohibit.
There, there, there's an ordinance that kind of. There, there, there's an ordinance that kind of says that.
Right, but we want to, I want to specifically know if we can say that.
Can prohibit activity? No, you can't prohibit.
You, you, you can't because we can only do what would be consistent with the general laws of the state and.
So it's because we're, we're a general law city.
Right, I mean, you, you, so we can, you can see what would be done as, as a whole municipality.
Okay.
Go beyond the general laws.
Gotcha.
But, but tubing business would be considered an allowable business in the state of Texas. I mean, we could, we could, i- if, if something presents, say, uh, a public nuisance, if, if someone said we could regulate that based on safety. But, but we, we can't take what is otherwise a safe and allowable business.
Even unsavory businesses such as, you know, pawn shops.
Right, right.
Sexually oriented businesses, those, you, you, you have, you, we do. But, but they're still allowable within constraints and, you know, pawn shops are have to, you know, allowable within certain areas and you have, you still have to permit a lot of activity.
Buckers administration, I think with, uh, they actually had some restrictive requirements of, of the commercial business on the river, there was some.
It's a, it's a fifty foot setback or a hundred foot setback of tubing businesses adjacent to R one, R one A, R, R two, and it's called ordinance one five five. So I think I've mentioned that enough, but that is the only thing we have about tubing businesses or recreational activities in our city. And I will mention this again because it is a hundred foot setback from residential land and I've mentioned this for the last six months and no one's listened to me.
We got parks.
We have listened to you.
We have listened, but we got parks too.
To me about this and I'll bring.
We got, you got.
Beginning of the year, believe you me, so.
We got parks.
We got parks.
That's what, that's what our defense is.
Okay, okay. So let's move on to four point two, we had a wonderful workshop the other night. And I wanted to get some feedback of what the council thought. Um, and direction, which way we should move.
It's for his direction we should go is.
Well, I, I, I can update, Sam and I were at the, the water meeting last night. We, we got kicked out.
Well, your wife was there too.
Yeah, I don't, I went, my wife went.
Here, I'm throwing you a bone over there.
They're charging her phone because it's dead.
I can see you in the reflection of the window.
They know that they're in a liability position, they just had this issue with Riverbend. Riverbend and the private driveway did an upgrade of the, of their, um, bridge. And they didn't tell them in advance either and they went out of pocket a hundred fifty thousand dollars to, uh, relocate the, the water line over there.
They did, I didn't know they did that.
Yeah, so they had to move it and rearrange it, so I was there and I said, well, you know, when we applied for the additional grant, we probably should have had made sure Turk should have called them. So I talked to the mayor and the mayor went, you're, well, okay, but they just did work in the right of way and didn't tell us. I went, good point, mayor. So, you know, the level of communication between the organizations, I think at the meeting they were very finger pointing our way. But I'm gonna tell you, what I'm gonna tell you is, you know, technically you did work, the right of way is owned by the city. You did work in the city's land and you didn't talk to the city. And you moved it, it's not a repair. They moved water lines in the city and, you know, the mayor put me in my place because I was, she's right. I didn't even consider that. And I did say I would bring it to council that I was disappointed that Turk did not talk to them in advance about this because they might not have put it where that, where they did. But the flip side, if they'd come to the city and talked to the mayor, the mayor would have warned them that we were in the process of getting to that position as well, so this, uh, back and forth goes back and forth.
Permit with Rice, what, what it was, Rice Broad Brand. Where we consulted with our city attorney, it was engineers, I mean. And, uh, did a huge permit, uh, they paid, it was a pastor thing, about fifteen hundred dollars to our, our engineers to consult and uh, they were very respectful and asked where they can put their lines and everything, so. You know, we can work with all of that and I wish that we did have a better relationship in that regard with the water supply corporation. We did go and talk to them though, right from the beginning. It's what changed is we were saying, we believe that the grant can pay for this. And what changed as of the beginning of November was we've cut this pro- we're, we've cut this down a lot. And now we want help from you, these are your lines. And that's when everything got very ugly.
The cost isn't driven so much by the design and they wouldn't really had any input on the design. Uh, as we've gone through this from pre-application, post-application and then after the town halls, I'm pretty sure is, we've gone to them and said, do you mind if we put the water lines here in the design? They say, no. And that's the end of the conversation. We didn't engage them in some sort of brainstorming and help us design our culverts. Because that's not their role, rules to operate the, the water lines. And so we, when we have design packages, you know, ready for their review or, you know, get a sanity check on, hey, does this make sense? And they say, yeah. And that was it. And it likely occurred even outside the auspices of Steve Fondle, it could have been just Richard, their, I go there, uh, engineer, talking to our engineer on a quick email chain or you know, call or, you know, something like that, but I know that there was exchanges, the fact that they said they hadn't heard about this in two or three years.
Ridiculous.
Right, we, I mean, I haven't engaged them in like design consultations. You know, but we provided them.
I do have to commend you and the council, we were professional that night. It's, I won't say names, there were several individuals that were not professional in a public setting with, with a board and a council, it's, it's really unacceptable.
I wouldn't agree with that.
Well, I'm not talking, I'm talking to Jared.
Talking about the council, sorry.
You like to interrupt me, sir, I'm gonna just say what I thought, you can add your two cents worth in. But a personal attacks on the mayor is unacceptable in my opinion. And, uh, Jared had a great presentation and they kept interrupting the man, that is totally unacceptable in my opinion, we're all professionals, we're all elected officials and we have a responsibility to our citizens and they have a responsibility to us. I'm a member of the water board, I mean, I'm a member, I'm a meter. They have, they have the responsibility to be professional because they're elected. And way, the way those several individuals acted, I have never seen that before. Totally unprofessionalism, I'll leave it at that.
Well, I think as the mayor may have said just, just then is that the the water company believed that this was going to be included in the grant. It wasn't that they believed that it was, it was written into the grant by an actual factual monetary amount. It wasn't anything that anyone believed, it was actually written into the grant, so I'm not gonna.
You're exactly right, Sam.
And, and I mean, you said believe that they believed.
Well, let me correct it, they were in the, the water lines were in the budget. There's no contract between us and the water department saying we're absolutely gonna pay for those lines.
That's what it said in the grant.
If you remember at the end, I specifically asked Jared that question, was anything signed between the city and the water department? That's why, uh, it's one of the reasons I asked that question was to specifically say, did we give a written commitment from the city that we were going to do that? A budget is a budget, we've gone to a, this grant, we modified it many times. And modifications are normal in a grant process. And they know that, they are well aware that they're on the hook for it, okay? They had a twenty minute discussion about how much of their lines were in the easements and right of ways and they, they know that they have sixty percent roughly, Steve said, of their lines are in right of ways, including on eighty. When eighty gets expanded, Steve said it right in the meeting, yeah, we're on the hook for that, use the word on the hook. Uh, they're well aware of it, am I happy that we're putting this in, in their court? No. Am I disappointed in the methodology and the process and that it's gotten to here? I'm not happy at all, I think I made myself very clear about it. Um, but the fact is, we have a responsibility right here, that's it. Whether we're a board member of the water company or not is irrelevant. Our responsibility is here first, I gave an oath, I swore here. I did not give an oath over there, even though I'm a member. I give an oath here, I'm only responsible for what's going on here first. You know, I mean, I mean.
What does that mean?
To the city first, not to the water.
Yeah, and so what does that mean?
That means I have to do what is best for the city. And if that's the financial, uh, telling the, the water board that they have to pony up, then they have to pony up. There's no other way for us to get it funded and we're on the hook for the balance, we're in a tough spot. I don't know else we're supposed to do.
After the meeting.
I'm not happy about it, I will, I'm, I was, my pollution was to modify the second part of the grant to cover.
Right.
The balance, if we can move that over there, then there is some potential work around there and we don't go as far.
I don't understand why we aren't doing, making, making any effort to, um, share that cost with them.
So after the meeting, we talked with Langford and with the engineers and they both agreed to go back and do some exploration. And one of the things that Jessica tried and said was, you know, when we go out for bed, maybe it won't be as high as what we're thinking. And maybe there will be the money to do the water pipes along with whatever other extension. I mean, right now, all we've done is really introduce the idea that they're going to be responsible for their own water pipes. And we'll just see how the budget goes because anything that we save in one area of the budget can move, be moved to another area. One of the things that, um, Steve said in one of our meetings was well, our attorney said that you budgeted this amount, therefore that's what you are liable for. And that's not true, it's a budget, it's just like our city budget. If we don't spend money on an election, that money can be moved to pay for the police car getting repaired.
You can move it all around during the grant.
You can't change the grant. We still have to do what we told the government we were gonna do, we're gonna mitigate the water.
The water company liable to, to pay for that, then that's changing.
Because it is their liability, it's always been their liability. And they know it.
Can I ask this, can I ask a question? I don't understand why we aren't making any effort to split the costs with them.
That's what I tried to do, my whole point of the conversation.
That's, that was proposed.
To try to give it an ad hoc agreement.
No, they wanted, they wanted to pay it and us pay them back, that was nix like me.
Let Jared finish.
Yeah, so they don't, my interpretation of the conversation was they don't see this as a problem that they're responsible for and therefore there, it's not a problem that they're, they need to resolve. And, and so if they, they're saying this is not a problem of ours, this is only a problem of the city, we're not here to help you out. We don't have the money, just help you out willy-nally whenever you ask for it. What I tried to identify for them is, no, this is probably a problem that you're gonna have to resolve, let's negotiate some sort of cost sharing or ways to, to lessen the burden on the shared customers. And they wouldn't engage in that conversation even to a, on a penny, like fifty fifty split, whatever it is, if it's on, if it ends up being only two hundred thousand dollars. Whatever, let's negotiate it and they would, they didn't see that they had a need to negotiate at all.
No, it seemed like they said, we created the problem, why would they?
Correct, correct, and that's my whole point, we, we, we wanted a, a meeting with their board. Not you, the mayor, going to them and they go back. We, as a council, voting, you know, we were, we're elected officials, the board's elected officials to have a dialogue. And all that meeting was, was a discussion. It was nothing contractual, all it was is say, hey, we got a problem. And what really irritated me is they didn't let Jared even do his full presentation. They just got aggressive, 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 like, we're not gonna do that. At least have a conversation, that's what professionals do. You know, you, you have a problem, we sit down and we talk. And several individuals are just use the bully technique, I want to just, I'm gonna ram it down your throat, right? Uh, so I hope they, I hope they come back with some dialogue and we need to have an intelligent discussion.
Sam, or, or you, did, did, were, do you stick around after the meeting, did you get a sense that?
That's what I was gonna say, apologize. But at the meeting last night, I felt that they understood what decision they ran.
Okay.
That's what I felt, that's what I took.
They, they, they know, they, they said it, I said Riverbend, they knew that was a surprise. I mean, Steve pulled me off in the middle of the street two weeks ago and was like, we, we don't have this kind of money, we just lost a hundred fifty thousand on Riverbend flying side of us with this three months ago. You know, and, I mean, it, that's how they felt, okay, I mean, you, how you feel is how you feel, but we didn't budget for it, they have money. I sent you their financials, you could look at it, you know, I mean, they're at all this debt and they have all this cash. Doesn't, I don't unders- wanna pretend that I have been enough of their meetings to understand it, other than it's the most convoluted thing I've ever seen. I don't get it, I don't know why they have that much cash and that much debt, it makes no sense to me whatsoever, but I'm sure there's some logic behind it that someone could explain to me some other time. But the net effect is, um, we have two hundred fifty thousand dollars in, in reserves as a, as a position of requirement. They should as well, they have a one and a half million dollar, one point four million dollar, um, budget.
Larger than ours.
They are, they are supposed to have twenty-five percent contingency at eighty at all times. These are standards that the businesses are in, as municipalities. For them to just come in here and say they don't have money, I'll be more than happy, you could forward because I can't forward to you guys the, what they handed out in their meeting and you can look at how much cash is in their bank account. And it's a lot of money, it's eight, seven or eight hundred thousand dollars, it's a lot of money. There's four hundred fifty thousand in one account. There's money, now it's allocated and it's not restricted money by the way. There's restricted money too. Okay, they have a lot of debt, they have a lot of payments, but they do have cash. For them to say in there they had no money in that meeting. That did look like that when I read their balance sheet yesterday.
What did that one individual say, this is a hostile takeover, I mean, just like, huh, totally unacceptable.
It, it doesn't matter, Mike.
But I'm just saying, you don't, you do not act like that.
My, my, how they choose to act is how they choose to act. They're, they know, they know they're on the hook, okay? Do I like the fact that they're on the hook? No, do I want them to be on the hook? No. Well, I would like to modify the, the, the grant, the second grant to try and, uh, accommodate it. Am I disappointed that they were not, uh, told bluntly when we, I talked to the mayor about what we shortened the, the, this grant the first time? We probably should have gone to them and said, there's a chance that you're on the hook because we already cut back the grant. The first grant and we didn't even consider taking that out of their pocket. And maybe we should have, you know?
Yeah, we could have had this fight a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I mean, there's a lot of working part, we can, we can all get mad and we all did something. You know, ultimately, our job as council people are just to take information that the experts provide us and make decisions. It is not our fault that we don't know every little thing about it. We do not do this for a living, we do not write grants for a living, we do not handle it. I told you in the meet, the other meeting, I do blame a little bit the Langford and Turk by not giving us these options and explaining to us and educating us what the, you know, the nuances of this is gonna be, because that's really what I, they are supposed to, I think, told to tell us.
Well, they did tell us. But they, they came in on a, on a Monday, said, we have a problem. I said to myself, oh, God, I don't want to have this conversation. And then emailed Steve like, hey, can I see you next week? And he came in next week, I was like, hey, I just got bad news. This is what happened. So what, what, the, the process was, they're preparing their bid packages, finalizing all their things. And whenever they finally got around to doing the updated cost estimate, they're like, hey, we got some bad news, we need to come to the office.
We need to cut out the deal, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, I just really, this is my question. Before they called you Halloween or whenever it was.
Around that time.
Okay. When did you talk to them?
We have a monthly status.
I mean.
Actually, the water department in the city worked very well to.
Oh, no, I I understood the question. We have a monthly status.
Um, is that? Also from the meeting that last night, I did get the feeling is Steve that we need to be having more workshops and be communicated more. So. So my question is, if the city decides to twist the arm of the water company, which that's kind of what it's gonna be, right? Can they um take it to court? And how long will that take?
I I was gonna, that's, there's a conversation that we might want to have an executive session on that topic as it relates to this. Um, and even this whole idea of forcing them. Because I I didn't go through any, there's a statute kind of suggests that they are, the engineer told us, they are. But nobody's really thought about it. And I don't wanna spring Kent on having like a knee-jerk opinion on the matter, but it might be something that we wanna talk through with him.
I agree.
Ours session. We can wait till there's other conversations.
My my question is, is what's gonna be more expensive for them? To give you guys to to contribute the five hundred fifty thousand or whatever it's gonna take, or hire a lawyer and to keep it in the courts in litigation till the grant runs out and Martin Dale's left on the hook? And no one has planned for that.
So one thing.
That's my, that's my concern.
Other than the legal issues, I was thinking about is if they weren't having the realization that this is or could become a problem of theirs. Once we get our own house in order with what uh Freeland Turk are gonna look at and what um Langford's gonna look at, and we find out what is other options, and we explore all those and put bows on the ends of them. This sort of reluctance to participate, maybe there's ways to engage them indirectly to motivate their response um with us. So, I don't know, if I were a community member and I read in my newspaper that the combined organizations spend, you know, two and, you know, a quarter of a million dollars every year on duplicated overhead. I don't think it's that much. It's probably less than that. I'm using an inflated number. And there's like a new, you know, college student wants to get some of their chops on investigative report.
Yeah.
We could, we could have people take a look at it. I'm sure the Sam Marcus newspaper, Lockhart Paper, and maybe even some news outfits in Austin would be very curious to see how the effects of inflation on small towns. And then evaluate how rising costs are causing organizations to rethink their their former postures and how Martin Dale's getting caught up in the the swirl of it. Also think that um that'd be something we get to later of if they if there is, if the statute could be employed to say that Martin Watch by Corporation is subject to the regula- regulation of the municipality. That us as a municipality look at drafting some ordinances on issue to address that matter, to put it more clearly in black and white, to motivate them to come to the table. This is, we're not trying to be, my my effort in saying these things is not to put them in a corner and try to do hostile takeovers or any of this other nonsense. It's really, I wanna have a worthwhile discussion, other than you, I come to a meeting to have some brainstorming on how do we how do we save these people who we both serve? And you don't wanna have that conversation, and you just wanna say, it's your, it's your problem. You created this. Okay, that serves nobody.
I totally understand where you're coming from with that whole duplication of efforts and all of that. I I get that. I don't think this is the appropriate time to be having those questions, because right now you under so much pressure over what the heck to do with these things, that that does come out as a threat. And I hear it that way. I think a lot of people at that meeting heard it that way. And I just don't feel like it's the appropriate time. I feel like it's the right choice, the right solution. I don't think it's the right time to have that conversation.
I don't, I don't think it's a threat to say.
You don't think it is, and that's why you wanna do it, but.
It's not, it's it's not. It's an opportunity for us to find a way to come up with a solution to rub find a half a million dollars without raising rates.
But you're not going to find a half a million dollars out of.
There's real practical reasons for working together, though. All of it is right. They said that they can't get grants. We can get grants. We can help. If the utilities were together, people wouldn't have to go to two separate offices to pay their utilities. They just go to one. You'd have the overhead of sending out bills and collecting payments in just one spot.
All of that is correct, but right now is a crisis. And crisis is not a good time to introduce a major significant change.
Give you some backstory, though. The mayor and I, and Jared did a presentation over a year ago with them to try and pitch this idea. Okay, so this is not the first time.
A year and a half before that, I had pitched the idea to their board in person.
To be quite honest with you, they kicked us out in going into the executive session, voted in closed session, and then told us at the end, which, I mean, they broke every rule under the end of the sun, okay, doing this. And they just basically said, that's nice, go away. And they were, you know, polite because we're neighborly, but the attitude was very much like, you know, leave us alone, you know.
Well, do you think part of their their, I guess, interpretation of how it went has to do with just being blindsided by the Riverbend project? And so maybe they were feeling kind of burnt by that, or is it just because they, because it sounded kind of like they?
Riverbend's not new. I was talking with Steve about the Riverbend project well over a year ago. They've known about that.
It sounded like from the very minute that we even presented any of it, they felt.
They felt, they felt. Put against a wall just by walking into the room. I give them a lot of credit for having courage to walk in the room.
Their, that was their demeanor the minute they walked in the door. And they said, we don't have any preconceived notions about this, but they didn't. And they basically made it sound like we did not know what we were doing in managing this grant, and that's how the problem was created.
I gotta be careful in how I say this, but there are, my my perception of the complaint, the the tone and tenor of the conversation and the complaints levied towards the city were that certain individuals thought of themselves as the institution. Instead of those individuals seeing themselves as representatives of the customers that that institution serves. And unfortunately, there were a few folks in that room that I don't think the city will ever be able to reach and have a intellectually honest conversation with.
Correct.
I I think that the only way forward, frankly, is to use crisis as opportunity. Or we find new membership that we can engage on in an intellectual conversation in a small group and present options that might be acceptable. Because I don't think we're gonna be able to negotiate with some of those individuals that we're speaking.
Correct. I totally agree with you. And I, based on, I I said to you about it, kind of, I think you will agree with me. There's a couple of people in that room that are and that's how they treated us a a year ago when I went with the mayor. They just absolutely looked down on us and just said, that's your problem. You deal with it. F you and.
What they don't realize is that's hurting the people that they're supposed to serve, and they just see themselves as, it's my budget. This is my company.
I don't look at it this way. I'm just, I wanna, you know, I'm nobody, you know, I'm just here.
Y'all, in their defense, and to help explain to you, charity as well, this po- this this um grants project is not super popular in this town.
I wouldn't say that.
There are a lot of. There are a significant portion of residents who don't agree with what, how we got the grant, why we got the grant, with how it's been handled. We don't agree. We feel, and a lot of us feel like Martin Dale's been taken advantage of by the engineers and by the grant writer. There, and then so there is already, and that's, this has been going on for over a year, right? And so there's already whispers and talking. I mean, people talk. It's a small town, right? So people are walking into that meeting with preconceived notions about the project, because we've been, they've been hearing about it. We've been speaking up against it. People, you know, and so, so you're right, but it's it's not because of Riverbend. It's because there's a significant portion of our population that does not support this.
Well, I was trying to give them the benefit of the doubt. That's why I thought, well, maybe it had something to do with that. But no. I've been coming to city council meetings for a long time, and I've never really seen a very friendly relationship between the two. And but that that night was absolutely one hundred percent clear in my mind that it was, there was not a good relationship. And I think if there's not a good relationship, then it is a difficult time to then ask for assistance in some way, or to ask them to be compassionate to our issues, even though they affect the entire city and and it should be a a partnership problem. But for whatever reason, it's not seen that way. It's seen somehow that it's our problem and that we need to fix it. And I get that. Um, so I can understand why they weren't really open to suggestions.
There was just, there was just several people about all.
Well, but not everybody was, and I felt like the people at, you know, at the table were trying to be more understanding and were actually, um, and I I I don't know her name, but the lady who talked to the grant writers and said, shouldn't inflation be considered? And that's exactly what I was thinking when they were talking. It's like, shouldn't that have been considered? Because inflation's not new. It's not like it's never happened before. So I felt like they were trying to be more understanding.
She was a professional.
Well, and I just, I just think they they came across more as they were trying to understand the problem and fix the problem, not just it's us against you.
And actually, in defense of the city, everybody was really excited about the grant until it came to the land acquisition phase. And people were individually asked to
Really was the trees, because the original project was going to, was going to cut down massive, beautiful like trees all along.
And we bent over backwards. We changed the design.
Five times.
And I made a point, no one in this room originally voted to approve this project. And so, you know.
And someone on the water board did.
No.
I thought that was, I thought Nick said he voted on it.
Yes, he did, but he was not an original. See, once you accept the grant, once you accept the grant, the mayor basically inherited the grant. It was given, it's like, oh, you want it here. You don't get, you don't get to undo it now. You've done it. You've accepted the grant. Everything that this council, I think, has done has been very, uh, you know, friendly to the the people in the city. Um, and like you said, been very accommodating to me in particular um with regard to acquisition. But I think the grant, to be honest with you, was ridiculous in its scope with regard to the land acquisition, but that's, you know, here here nor there. Um, but the the net effect is the same. It's like, I think that we've always done things in the the betterment of the whole community. We could have an argument about the position of the grant and who it benefits and the proper uh moral ground that it 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 applies to. Again, I I've already said I have reservations about that to begin with myself, but I don't have that luxury of undoing what has been done. I have to go forward, and we all have to go forward with what we know right now. You know, and they know what's going on. There by us in fighting and creating a non cohesive front with them, all we're doing is delaying the situation. We need to go with them, and I think Jared made, he did, you did great, Jared, that you were awesome last night. You're trying to pitch it, you got emotional. You really tried to get through to them um with regard to that this is, we're we're trying to work with you on it. Um, if we're bickering and fighting here, they're just gonna sit back and let us fight amongst ourselves. And we're going to not get this done timely. And forget about what's going on in the past. We have to look forward. We have a hard deadline. We need to get shuttles in the ground as soon as possible. If they're not gonna accommodate us, we're, if we have to go legal route, fine, we gotta go legal route. We're gonna find, we have to find a way to make this work.
We went to them and we're trying to work it out with them. What if we would have done the same thing that Riverbend did? Like, here's your water pipes, fix them.
You know, it.
Well, if you get that, let's let's assume we're gonna, we're gonna knuckle them under or whatever is gonna happen, and they're gonna pay, right? Okay, so then that's dealt with. What about the cemetery and what about the family? Like, there's still.
There's nothing wrong with the cemetery.
There's still at least, there's still at least three. Wait a minute, let me go ahead.
I'm sorry.
There's still at least three families that are insisting they're not gonna take any deal. They're gonna take you to court if you try to do eminent no base. And one of them, I heard say it just the other day.
At which point, we we go in a closed session, we talk with our turn.
So I'm just wondering, though, I guess my point is just, we've got more than, like, just the water company situation would be in the grant world, it would be considered a huge issue. When you put all three of those into the same grant, I've done hundreds of thousands of dollars of federal grant writing and managing and never ever this far into the grant, seen a grant with this many major obstacles still to be resolved that all, any one of the three could tie you up in court longer than your deadline. And I'm not saying that because I have any particular way I think it should go. I really don't have, like, I'm not saying do this or do that. I'm saying, this is really, like, I'm just sort of in awe of the problem. I'm just looking at this project and going, wow, this is, this is a lot. And you can sit here and say, no, it's all gonna be fine. But you can't, but that's not realistic. It may all work out, and I hope it works out. I want it to all work out. But I think it's not realistic to say these are not significant problems. Because I haven't seen another grant that's had all three major things.
So what do we do about that?
We're fighting the fire. You've still gotta fight it. I mean, I totally agree with everything you said. But the, we 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 have to just, you know, it's behind us and just go and fight the fire.
So you're gonna ignore, but you you can't ignore, like, what if, because there it's it's.
Well, we're not gonna stop, we're not gonna stop working on everything else, just because there's a hiccup. Are they big hiccups? Absolutely. But we we don't stop working.
But we maybe need to think about what are, what are our plan Bs? What are our backups? What are our other things, instead of just like continue to go forward with uh and like everything else be damned? It probably would help us if we said, okay, well, here's this problem. And here are like a couple of options for that one. Here's the wa- like, the water people, we've done that. We did a very nice job of that. Jared, you did a nice job of presenting. Here's six different ways this could happen. Some of them are gonna be more friendly and some of them are gonna be more difficult to swallow, but these are all options. We don't have those for anything else. So maybe all I'm saying is maybe we need to spend some time on these others as well, because yes, water, absolutely. We we're, we're gonna, we've now at least reached the point where we got all of those options out. We said them all. We did the meeting. They are all aware of it. And um and according to what you're saying, last night, they seem to be in different degrees of accepting the realities of it.
I think they know it, but they're they're gonna try to ride us out. They're gonna ride out.
I think we're going to be on the scope that that we discussed was the Martin Watch by Corporation meeting. We're we're now venturing into
You're correct.
The entirety of this grant and.
Yes, absolutely.
All these topics were discussed that night. All these topics were discussed that night in the same way.
This, this, okay, it wasn't just, it wasn't just the water issue, it was the grant and, and.
Yes.
Yes. And, and regardless, even if it was, we, we still need to do these other things to make this official.
But what are, what are our options if the landowners won't, and, and we did have.
Who are the landowners that aren't gonna sign?
There's at least three of them.
Who?
I am not gonna discuss that right now.
We can't discuss that specifically unless you're those.
Well, I mean.
Beyond the scope of what's on that.
Yeah, beyond the scope, that's beyond.
The thing is.
No, my question is what are our options? I'm saying with the grant. No, but I'm saying with the grant, do they consider that if they don't, if they won't relinquish that or they won't, is there an option that we have within that grant?
So I think because those were topics brought up during the workshop about the, cause I was very careful to say, I, I don't know how this holds up because I framed it in terms of assumptions. That these, there's assumptions on what we can do, there's assumptions being made on timeline, assumptions being made on next steps regarding the, um, uh, that land acquisition and things. You know, if we were going to discuss those same topics, I think those are probably better had with our attorney.
Yeah.
Rather than guessing at it in an open session.
And have a grant writer there who is not, if, if I can just give you guys one nugget of wisdom, I would say somebody from the city of Martindale who is not Langford, Langford's the grant writer, is that right? Someone from the city of Martindale who is not Langford needs to understand this grant and start being Martindale, city of Martindale's representative on this grant. Because.
The grant manager?
Somebody else needs to be, I don't know if she, like, that's what I was trying to u- understand at the meeting the other night, is she the grant manager? Who, who is the, who is the contact? Who's minding the store? It needs to be us, not her.
Actually been very good.
No, I know.
They kept us on track with all of our deadlines and.
Nice and respectful, but also I do believe that it has been mismanaged.
I do too.
I don't think it's been mismanaged at all.
You don't have to agree, but it is our opinion and we're both we're federal grant writers that have managed grants.
Okay.
What's that?
Based on what facts?
I mean, if you wanna get into it, we, we certainly.
The fact that a, an oak tree became like, yeah.
No.
The second.
Don't, don't do that. Be, give her a legitimate chance as an expert in this field to educate you.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, it's like, what facts were we supposed to, like, if there's been any issue, it's been lack of foresight?
No.
That's hard to fault somebody.
No, you didn't let her answer. You asked her and now you're answering it.
Wait. Uh, there's different grants, so if you're in the field of education, grants are not the same as they are in the field of construction. And so we're gonna have to deal with things differently here than you, than what you're maybe used to.
When it comes to education, I mean, I, I, I have a wide range of plans. I do all kinds of stuff.
And the way that federal agencies work is pretty universal regardless of whether it's education or not.
Government, it's me and Bud. Okay, so I understand about getting extensions and changing scopes and moving this line item and the budget to that line item. You have to get permission for all of that, you have to make amendments, you have to get approval.
That's all the same.
And that is all the same. So all I am saying, and I don't wanna belabor this too much, but all I'm saying is that I do think that with an examination of how this project has been managed, not only by Langford, but also by Freeland Turf, I think that I think that looking at, looking at how things were handled over the last few years, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not convinced that Martindale would actually be on the hook for all of the money.
Right.
I think that some of that liability and talk to the lawyer, I think that some of that liability because some of this mismanagement, I think that would fall on those firms. Because I believe that Martindale's been taken advantage of.
Well, I don't, I don't agree with that at all.
That's fine.
So here, here's where, here's where I think the, the, the disconnect is on this, and this is what the city could benefit. I, I think distilling Jared's point down to what's most basic is he's saying the fact that something bad has happened is not indicative of someone doing something wrong. Okay, sometimes bad things just happen. Now, your position is that you believe based on your expertise that something bad has happened. And what I would say is, well, the city could potentially benefit from that expertise. So why don't you help the city take occasion to put together an email, write a narrative listing all of the things that you think have been done wrong, so that the city can benefit from that expertise. Take that knowledge that you have and potentially do something good with it. So you can commit to, to providing the city that narrative, to giving that to Jared, then the city can have that information that will be in the best position to act on it.
I'm happy to.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Good suggestion.
Yeah, and that would be very nice of you.
It would.
Thank you.
I mean, the, the, I took public speaking for many years and the three things that we did was we would compliment, critique and challenge. And so the meeting did start out very complimentary, but then towards the middle, it did start to unravel, your frustration was revealed and evident. Okay, and then you said these things to them like, well, you were strengthening your position when you possibly shouldn't have or needed to at that point. They did feel threatened. And, and then they came back and said some maybe harsh things and then you, you know, you had the lectern and you slammed it down on, on the floor. Uh, you, you, you did, you picked it up and you, and, and you went, went down and all that with it. Your frustration was evident. And I think you could have.
I don't think we need this.
Oh, so here's the serious.
We're talking about the meeting, we're talking about the meeting and he's our city administrator.
The criticism.
It's not criticism, I'm talking.
I did, I was concerned that I came across too strongly, I rewatched the entire recording. I came away feeling like, woo.
I didn't.
Probably not my best, but.
Well, that's.
I, I felt pretty validated because my frustration lied in.
All I'm saying, your frustration was evident, that's all.
I started with, I, I think my frustration was pretty righteous though. Because it comes to the fact of people neglecting their jobs as representatives of the organization that they're supposed to represent and instead repre- representing themselves because they believe themselves to be the institution that they work for or associate with. I'm sorry, Steve Fondle is not the water company.
You got it.
Is not.
And he's the one that accused the mayor for doing this grant since you can have a paved road in front of our house.
Right.
Unacceptable.
So, so my thought is, if we have four hundred people that we're responsible for and they have a thousand people and four hundred are the same, forty percent of their customer base is the same as ours. What's best for them? I don't care what it is. I don't give, like, they can, I'm not trying to take it, take it over. Here, have, have the wastewater system. Improve your budget, go from a million five to a two million dollar budget. I don't care if that means the four hundred people that we're all supposed to be serving collectively benefit. I, cause I, I really think that the, the, the worst thing that ever happened is for either of our organizations to go out and get a loan and either raise property taxes or raise utility rates. Uh, I mean, that's, that would be asinine at this point.
Well, and I don't think we need to increase the animosity between any of the citizens of Martindale
Right.
And the city council. And by being angry with the water company and them being angry with us, I think that could increase the animosity between the other citizens that think that what we're doing is not the right thing either. But I also think all of us as a city council need to come together. And if we disagree on something, then we have to talk about that in private and be respectful during the meeting and all be on the same page. And we can have different opinions, but if we disrespect each other, then it makes it look like none of us know what we're doing.
That's.
I think it's sad that something so positive as getting a grant to, to fix a problem and get a new road has turned into.
A fight.
A fight, yeah. I think it's really sad.
Especially when we had several open meeting round halls during the, the, before we went forward.
Yeah.
After we got accepted, the, and immediately after we signed up the contract, we had some preliminary designs. We were talking about roundabouts at the true tree, all sorts of things. And it didn't come in until we said, hey, from, from this point to this point, based off our surveys that we're, that people, you know, were allowed us to do, that, you know what, we should, should a straight line, that tree's safe, that tree's not safe. And then people lost their damn hands. Over, over a couple of, like, a few oak trees and a bunch of, you know, brush. And I, I, I mean, I, I'm from Oregon, I understand tree hugging, but this is like.
Yeah, hackbears.
This is another level.
Great marbles.
No, it was all big red oak trees.
But the thing is, it wasn't five feet. It was twenty-five more feet. I was fifteen foot right away. They were going in thirty-five feet from the edge of the new road.
I think that was a math mistake and we didn't correct that for him.
Wasn't Jared, I sat there with Turk at my house right after I moved here, I came to his couple of meetings and he, you suggest, hey, Turk, you need to look at it. And he did, he came to my house and I said, where is this gonna be? He said, at the base of your red oak. Now you go to my house and you go measure it. I measured it, I flagged the whole yard.
Well, part of that.
And Jared.
That, that was, that's not for the water lines, that's for the trucks to go back and forth to do. Cause by temporary.
Alternate.
Superbike, five fifteen.
Like McGovern, no, it was part of putting the, you have, if we dig up the road, you have to put a new road in its place and that's where the new road was gonna be.
The temporary road.
The temporary road.
I, I understand that.
That's, that's all it was gonna be. We had to, a change, we had to change the construction pattern in order to shrink it down where we dig half the hole, fill it in, dig another half the hole, fill it in, increase the cost.
No, the reason, one of the reasons he was coming so far, okay.
Well, yes, the piping was part of it.
Number one, he was putting the water, the water line and sewer line are by, by law are nine feet. He was doing it fifteen. That was the difference between the two lines. I told him, bring it down to nine, no, it's gotta be fifteen, so I had to look it up, it's nine feet according to TCEQ. And then I stood there at my yard and I told him, do you see that power line over there? On the other side of the road? There's an easement from that corner all the way down there underneath the power line. And he said, I can't move that water line. And I said, you can't? And two years later, he sat in this room and said, ah, man, if I'd only known about that two years earlier. Well, you son of a biscuit, there was a guy. And my wife was there. And he, I told him and I looked it up, I told him there was an easement over there off of Plains. He never bothered to look.
They sat here in the room and, and.
I have it on video. I have a video three times, I take the, tight stand the mother flipper where he said he couldn't do it. And then he comes in here and said, I wish someone did.
He didn't want to is what I understood.
Well, that's not what he said, that is absolutely not what he said.
I disagree with you, he's probably said.
You said it can't be done, I have a, it's three times in this room.
I agree.
And he said, I can't be done, and then he go, no, no, I was doing it two years ago.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
Well, that's the point of, that's why I'm pissed off with him, I think he's a nice guy, but don't blow smoke up my skirt. That's what he's doing.
It wasn't transfer water.
Because what, cause what he's trying to do is.
I don't care what he's doing, you don't lie. I'm on shitty council now and you lied to me. You sat here in this room and I had you on video lying. At the end of discussion, I have no respect for any, you know, you can, I tell everyone, you can call me names, you can do whatever you want, but don't effing not tell me the truth.
I think that.
And he did not say the truth, end of discussion. If you don't, if, you could disagree with me, but let's pull the video up, cause I can pull it, I got the date, timestamp, you know I do in my house.
You know what just triggered that?
I'm happy.
You know what just triggered all of that? All of that, right after Terry said, we can disagree with each other, but we shouldn't do it in meetings, blah, 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 blah. We have to be respectful. Jared, you turned around and said something that was totally demeaning and made fun of the homeowners who were upset about their property.
The tree huggers.
The tree huggers, the people that cared about the shit trees and.
Or that they were hackbears.
Or that they, whatever, but like you can't make fun of the, one of the groups of people we're having trouble with. That's the, that's, out of the three problems.
I don't, I, I fundamentally don't understand.
You don't have to, but don't say that out here. But don't say that in the meeting. Don't say that on, in the meeting when she just finished saying, please don't be disrespectful and out of the three major problems, you just inflamed one of them by insulting people sitting in this room who are homeowners who didn't want their trees upset and, and you don't have to like it, but insulting them isn't gonna help any more than when the water people were insulting our mayor and the other people around the table last night. It doesn't play well.
But, but here, here.
I, I've never met a seven million dollar tree.
I don't care. That has nothing to do with it.
The point wasn't that.
That doesn't have.
Was an alternative and I hope that there was. I'm not disputing, I, I'm the first one to agree that I'll give in. Am I, I'm not like the, my neighbors going down the street that are gonna fight you to the tooth and nail. And I know they will, I came up with a solution.
You're just saying you're sorry for making a wrong comment and it would be over.
There's a box, he was playing within a box. What we did was expanded the box, we found different solutions. But the box that he was working in was keeping the water lines where they were on the same side of the street. And not putting it underneath the culverts. We changed the box on them. That's, that's, that's what happened, so if he's, if he's saying you can't when the box is this big and we change the box that says now you can.
Again, he said it could not be moved across the street at all. That's what he said. That's what he said.
I see, my, you're right. I, I agree with you, those are what he said, I think interpretation of that meeting is, is probably different.
But, but he said, but here's the big, here's the big point though. That we've had discussions about this for, so, so, and these type of discussions have been going on and that's what's been good about this, cause we have been having discussions and we're not trying to ram it down anybody's throat that we've had these intense discussions, I've heard of. I, I've been involved since, since, for, for four years. And we've had these discussions and we've done modifications throughout, throughout the process because of that.
Now we're doing horizontal boring.
Yeah.
And, and the only trees really being affected by this are those that already exist within the rider. So the, the deliberative process worked. I think like, the delivery process worked and you're right. Calling people tree huggers, probably not the best move. But you know, the, the point being that at the end of the day, we did change the plans.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's my point.
And then for people to still say, ah, I don't like what happened.
Yes, of course you can, but if he expresses it politely, that would be a big help. That's all, that's all.
Down the, in shirts.
What's that?
In shirts.
You're in shirts?
Yeah.
Okay. So y'all were trying to figure out, suss out, you know, why the, the board, why that meeting went sideways and why they had such a crummy attitude. Small town, you're not from here, you're not local and you were, I think, I think that was also part of it, just if I can just speak freely, I think that was also part of it. Cause you come in, you're wearing a suit, you notice nobody else is and you've got your presentation and you were, you know, you had your group in a group and, um, you, you spoke well and you, you made, you made a good case, but at the same time, like, where's, this is a small town. And there's twelve hundred people here, right? And here's Mr. Big Shot, whatever, in his suit trying to tell us what to do.
See, that's disrespectful.
I know, and I don't mean that, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that I feel like that was such.
I disagree.
I don't mean to say that, but I think that it could have.
I think so, I think, I think you totally, I think it's totally a part of that.
You said, but I think that also, but because you don't live here, um, and I'm not saying I don't appreciate what you do for our town, please don't read that into this. I am saying that because you don't live here, maybe in, like, in our small town where we have slightly different priorities, maybe you have insurance, so, you know, like, trees are important, they, they're, they, they, they are important to the river, to the ecosystem. They beautify our world, like, our priorities are a little bit different, you know? You're, you're good with bottom line, so with numbers and maybe we're better with like toes in the water, you know?
Well, that's, that, that's fair.
Yeah.
I'll take that.
Yeah.
So how do you make it all work together?
Well, that's what we.
Somebody's gotta be good at the bottom line.
Democracy.
Democracy sometimes.
I think we just keep working it.
That's what it is. You can't, you can't, you can't assume that some property owner is gonna totally blow this up and to move forward assuming where, where we are today. You know, and then.
Y'all, they're gonna try.
Well, that's, that, that is, as various, that is, they're, they're right. When I, when my, my big issue with them is, I'm just disappointed that a year ago, we did the final design of this project. And I still don't have a copy of my appraisal, even though it was done two months ago.
Why?
No, it's being blurred.
Well, I understand that Mary, but that's a year to do an appraisal. I mean, that's where the timing, that's the frustration for me is.
Well, it's part of it. So there's several things that ran into that. We couldn't, we didn't go forward with their appraisals until the ecological study was done. And the scrapes and the, and the digs and the historical stuff got all blessed through and that got approved. Then there, we had to get, we, what, but we had to get to a final design in terms of where the, the lines were going to be drawn. And we went through several iterations and even there was a mistake and you and I, you brought to my pitch, it was like, yep, there is a mistake. We corrected it.
January.
That was in January. By the time those get redrawn, we go to the appraiser and they wanted like. Over ten thousand dollars to do a single appraisal on a single home. And I was like, this is ridiculous. There's no stinking way that an appraisal costs this much money. So I'm rounding around on that. Finally ended up just whatever, go with it. It's not my money, it's the government's money. We'll go with it. Those appraisals came in and there are. Very factual issues wrong with them. Now it's figuring out who has the authority to deny it. And then have them reappraised and all those matters. And so. Where it once left is, I think it might be something that Kent and I talked about tonight, everybody goes home, is what to do about those appraisals. Because what they started doing was evaluating stuff that is within the city's right of way. And that's not part of the landowner's land and putting valuations on it and attributing it to landowners. And so.
Thank you, that's the first time ever.
And, and so.
I understand, but you, you understand our protection. That was a, you know.
So for last three months, I think that, I think, I think the appraisal. Issue has been stuck for about close to ninety days now.
Yeah.
Well, they didn't even contact me to make an appraisal, I had to reach out to the mayor. I mean, the, the, the level of like little stupid incompetencies is not from the city standpoint.
Yeah.
It's from the logistics that's coming on from Langford. I don't, I, that's my opinion, okay? I mean, and, and the timetable kind of goes in my favor, I think. In my argument is that these appraisals were, I mean, he finished the drawing of the breakdown in this in February or March. And we didn't even, you know, appraisal should just start happening. There's nothing to stop doing appraisals when you know where the lines are supposed to be. They didn't even mail a letter out till September.
Well, that was another thing. We had, we had, we're having problems with getting the, the list served right. Because one of the things we wanna do is, as we've noticed when they're doing letters for um, right of entry for surveying. And even when we're trying to get town halls together, they're sending out notices that. I think there were some preliminary notices that were talking about land acquisition before things were wrapped up. I forget what it was, but there. Some sort of letter went out, got everybody spun up about. So we're trying to be real methodical and like, you're not sending a damn thing out. I looked at it.
But you know what I'm saying, this is, this, you were talking about a year ago.
Yeah.
And we still don't have offer letters on the final. I mean, that's ridiculous, take a year. I mean.
Oh, I can say. I does this all the time.
I know.
So how do they?
All I can say is we're not there only for land.
It doesn't matter, Mayor. They know, they know the timeline. They're, you know.
Yes.
You're, they're the ones who are putting us in the spot.
All of them are right in your wheel.
They're not putting us, they're putting us in the spots. They're putting us in the spots. It's like, well, you could, when should this have happened? I'm not involved in it, that's really, that's, unfortunately the ball is on your, in your courts regardless of that.
Do you, do you?
But in, I think the generally, everyone feels and the whiteboards using that as leverage against us because they know we're under a time gap. And I don't think that Langford's helped us. There's no wiggle room now. All we need is, like you said, all we need is one person who decides that they wanna go and drag out a legal battle and blow six months more.
Yeah.
And we're toast. And so we didn't have to pay a lot of money to get, to buy the property. I already know who she's talking about. I mean, I know one is not paying, is not gonna take a penny.
No, no.
You know? You know? And um, maybe two aren't gonna take a penny and they don't need the money. And they're just being butt heads. Like you said, they're just being butt heads, you know? And some of it is in the right of way. And I've had a conversation with them. Like, you can't get mad because the city is gonna put every room in the right, in the current right of way.
But they, and you guys could do eminent domain and you could, you could get it eventually.
Yeah.
Eventually, that's the kicker, but before the grant.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. I think, that's, that's why I'm very scared.
If I had to do it all over again, I'd just do eminent domain from the beginning. I guess that's why big cities do that.
Yeah, they, they, they wouldn't have spent six months.
They wouldn't have spent six months trying to get along with their neighbors.
We're trying to do the right thing.
Well, this learning curve that we've been speaking about tonight is almost like, I mean, throwing out boomerangs or something. And so what Laura's point is about having a grant manager or someone that explicitly. You've done well, but you have a lot of other hats to wear and, and all that, that we need that to proceed with these other grants. I don't want this predicament to keep up and keep up and say, well, let's blame this person, let's, let's, let's blame them. And then we have discourse and all this. We need someone to orchestrate and help us with, with these things. As Laura has instructed us towards or advised us towards.
Hey, Bud, Bud, you remember that document we came up with, a grant advisory several years ago I was talking about? Remember that?
Yeah, as a commission.
As a commission, remember we were talking about, I think we, we never, I never got it off the ground.
Yes.
Yeah, we can find that. Do you have that document? Thank you, sir.
Can I just say one more thing? This doesn't have to bank up the city, y'all.
Oh.
There's a, no.
Oh, well.
Excuse me, there is a way out of there. And there is, or absolutely is, you can talk, if, if things, if you guys get to the place where you're ready to have the conversation. How, what is our contingency plan? How do we mitigate? How do we, what's the, what's triage here, okay? I, I, I'm happy to do that. I think that you also would wanna talk to your lawyer. And I think that, like I said, you wanna represent yourselves to the GLO and not have Langford or someone else be your medal man. But I do think that there is a way out where you would still be eligible for future funds and you would potentially not be liable for all of the six hundreds, thousands, whatever that has already been spent.
Seven hundred to a million, you could be on the hook for it.
I agree with you.
There is a way out. It's not do it or go bankrupt. It's not, that's not it. There is a third option. And it's time to start talking about it.
Write an email, send an email, give a recommendation. You got a plan, do it.
But again, that, you know, whether you decide to use that information or not on this grant, that's fine. But it, but again, it's, it's like you were saying, you're learning about it. You haven't been in this position. You haven't done a lot of enormous grants before and, and they're not, they're, they are a science to themselves. So until you either hire someone that does them all the time or until you go through enough different scenarios where you pick up lessons along the way. It, it is a process of, you can't know what you don't know. So it may not look like there's been any mismanagement. I a hundred percent believe that you could believe that. But that, but if you're. But as you go through different experiences with grants, you do start to see, oh, this could have happened this way. This could have happened this way and. And you learn those things as you go. You cannot know what you don't know yet.
Well, I just know the county had to file for an extension also.
Yes, no, it's not about, it's not one thing. Like, it's not just, oh, you, a ton of people file for extensions. A ton of people need extensions all the time, on big grants, on small grants, all kinds of grants. People file for extension. There's not one thing. There's not like this, this is the one thing. It's more like, like. What Matthew was saying, there's like a lot of little things that have all kind of snowballed.
It started with those right of entry forms. Just trying to get the survey. I mean, it took nine months before we even started surveying.
Yeah, I think, yeah, there were, there were so many things that have put you guys behind the ball. That were not your fault.
I think we beat this. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I make a motion to adjourn at whatever fifteen or nine fifty?
I'll second that.
As I said, man, democracy.
In all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.